Excellent. Good evening. We are returning from executive session and reopening the meeting. We will begin with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to remind everyone that this meeting is being recorded. If any member of the public would like to make an audio or video recording this meeting, please notify me by raising your hand either in person or remote, and I will notify the public for the Massachusetts Public Meeting Laws. Do we have anyone who's making recording in grade? And name and where you're from? Phil DeGuyer, excellent, thank you. First mission and vision. Public Schools Creates World Class Student Learning Experiences. Our Clippers are empowered to pursue the goals with curiosity, integrity, and resiliency. And our vision is that Clippers are creative, inquisitive, and engaged learners who participate in their community as socially responsible citizens. Clippers effectively communicate solved problems that impact the world around them. Terrence, your fishbowl.
Okay, the fishbowl. You all know I hate this, but. Okay, so. This is what is going well in your school. So Nate from Worspon School, who's in sixth grade, said, "I like the teachers the most and science." Good. And something that would make school life better. This is from Liam. He's grade four and teacher. What would make my school life better is to have a clock that has the numbers on it. So it won't, we won't have to look up at the, at the normal clock. I was teaching French. I thought the kids didn't get the French part of the lesson. It wasn't the French. It was generally that they were so into the digital clock.
Thank you, Nate and Liam. Public comment. Members of the public are welcome to speak about items that are not on the agenda. Comments should be limited to two minutes of length. Due to the open meeting law, there will be no debate or action taken on public comment items. For items on the agenda, the chair may take comments from the public following the committee's discussion of an item. Additional comments and feedback can also be submitted by email to schoolcommittee@thomas.k12 MA.us. Do we have any public comments, either in person or remote? So we'll check our participants. Okay. So the first item on our agenda is presentation by the Lomondon Tribe Education Department. I was just like, we could put this later in the agenda. Our guest, maybe, or no. Okay, so we are going to thinking. Why don't we move to the staffing by the director of the presentation of staffing by the Director of Human Resources? Good evening, everyone. Dr. Stacey. Do I need to?
You should have permission if you'd like to.
Okay. So thanks for having me back. Thank you for being here. I am back to just share where we are in hiring for this year. We're going to take a little look back as well as where we are today and also go through the hiring process, soup to nuts, to help we get an understanding of how the process and workflows are coming together. First is position control, which is super important. We use PowerSchool Unified Talent, also known as TalentEd. It's an online platform for posting our open positions, submittals of, submittals of applications, advertising on Indeed, SchoolSpring, Monster, and other platforms. That comes as part of a package with TalentEd, also known as Unified Talent. Once a position has been identified as needing to be filled at the school or district level, the hiring manager, which is typically the principal or the director, will request that the position be posted by Human Resources. At that point, I'll identify several things, the reason for the vacancy, the leave of absence, a new position, transfer, non-renewal resignation, and whether the job description needs updating. If the job description needs updating, I'll work with the department head or the director on what they're looking for for the position. We'll identify the hiring manager and posting dates that need to go out different. Union contracts have different dates that we need to leave them up internally before we go external. And this is a process that shifted back to an electronic process for this school year. So, and what I mean by that is, there's a workflow within TalentEd that allows us to actually put all that information in through the product versus emails back and forth. Once, oops, once funds are confirmed by the Director of Finance, the Superintendent approves the position to be filled. If the position is a special education position, then the Director of Student Services, Dr. Woodward, is also made aware of approval for approval or for denial. This also has shifted back to an electronic process so that we can keep track of it. And Student Services is where we would most likely be filling positions after the school year starts, which is why I called it out here, but if it's needed in any other department, that director will also be contacted. The third step is recruitment. Once all steps are confirmed, the Office of Human Resources will post the position. It'll go live. A notification goes out to the hiring manager once the position has been posted, so they're aware. And then it's posted on SchoolSpring, Indeed, and Monster automatically because it's part of the package that we got. And you can start collecting applications. We can also start recruiting. You can start tapping into people who possibly applied for a position in the past that was very strong or resumes that we receive. Step four is the interview process. So principals receive the yearly Commissioners Careful Hiring Practices document, the Massachusetts Partnership for Diversity in Education question, and other timely resources to share with their building teams as they go about the hiring season, which typically starts in March for us. This process will continue to be supported by the Office of Human Resources. The DEI and Belonging Office is also working in conjunction with me on workshops and trainings in this area. Hiring managers screen applications, they schedule interviews, they put interview meetings together, they hold them, they check the references from direct supervisors. That's, safety is really important. We want to make sure that everyone's background has been thoroughly checked. And then they can choose a finalist for the position. This is shifted to an electronic process also that'll help us also see any trends through scheduling, scheduled hiring, interview, et cetera. And step five is onboarding and background check. Once the hiring manager informs the applicant that the other finalist was chosen, the hiring manager will begin the onboarding process by recommending them formally through the online platform. At that juncture, the Human Resource Administrative Assistants will usher them through the online process. And you've heard from me regarding the pandemic. Thank goodness we had this in place and that we were so used to using it because it did make hiring that much smoother because we had an online system already. We were very familiar with it and were able to usher folks through it pretty, pretty quickly and thoroughly. We also have one-on-one meetings and virtual meetings with the candidates. Even before the pandemic, we would have folks come in, even though it's an online onboarding process, because you want that human element. You want to be able to have some human contact that's not through the screen. So we haven't abandoned that. We still have them virtually if the individual needs it to be that way or if there's a time constraint and virtually would make it smoother and better. Third, the background check is conducted. The queries, the fingerprint background check before they are offered a formal letter. The finalist experience and education for the position are used to determine the salary that's going to be offered. I think I've discussed before here how it's important for us to have a good balance of new educators and new people in the field, but also experience and have a balance. And that also means where we're going to honor where they fall on the salary schedule. And for it to be an equitable process, you want to make sure that we're looking at experience and education for everyone. The start date is determined as a result of the background check clearing, the fingerprint background check clearing. And an offer of employment is, an assignment letter is drafted for the Superintendent to sign and subsequently shared with the candidate. The other piece that is extremely important to us is the mandatory training. So when an individual is hired after the launch of the school year, the Human Resources Office makes sure that the mandatory training that they missed from the first few days of school, when staff come in and they receive training on being a mandated reporter, like board pathogens and other mandatory trainings, we make sure that they get those done and taken care of when they begin. And it's not something that needs to be worried about at the school level. Some directors and department heads have additional training that they utilize. And those are also assigned to the Office of Human Resources, but we are starting to work with a gradual release model in having some of the directors be able to assign them as well. And then continued onboarding. The finalists sign their offer letter and the appropriate individuals at the school level, if the school level know the business office in terms of benefits and payroll, retirement, which is extremely important, and the unions are informed. The administrative assistance at Human Resources ensures that all appropriate technology, including system login and emails are requested for everyone. And the new hires also onboarded through the business office with their benefits and teaching and learning supports, the new educator orientation and induction and mentoring and coaching support if it's a teaching position. That is probably a good spot for me to pause in case you have any questions for me.
Great, thank you, Jeff. I can back to the fingerprinting and fingerprint check.
At one time, somebody brought to our attention that these were state databases, but do we now use national ones when we do background checks? So the query is Massachusetts. It's the state. The FBI fingerprint background check is all 56.
Andrea, when you were talking about the interview process, there was a section that you were mentioning the fact that it was not electronically, especially in relation to the hiring managers. All those pieces of the interviews and checking the references that you could see trends. What kind of trends might you be looking for in that information?
We'd be looking for, from the applicant pool, who was chosen and why? If there was an opportunity to look for candidates with experience with, where they would potentially find that the candidates had experience in a setting similar to ours, or if they had a diverse background, what kind of associations they belong to that could signal to us that this is a person we want to see in our district, what kind of trainings they went through. Some people include their, you know, the five last books they read. So we are going to be working with our hiring managers to start looking in a little deeper because not everyone identifies a diverse background in the hiring process. But sometimes you can glean from a resume or a cover letter, whether you have an active ally in front of you based on where they're spending their time and their experience.
My bad. Well, so some of the teachers in return hiring managers are managers.
So the hiring managers are all the principals in Massachusetts. Principals have hiring authority. So they're the hiring managers. And then directors in their departments are hiring managers. They would be the ones who would be hiring their staff. Thank you. Absolutely.
And I have a question regarding your slide, step two, confirming vacancy status. So when we look at the steps for, when we look at the steps for once funded and far superior headed, the school committee needs to approve or review and approve any new job descriptions. Where is that outlined in this process here?
So if the position is a new position and a job description needs to be approved, it's typically something that does come up to school committee for approval. And that's where that process would be if it's a new position that didn't exist before in the district.
So this is just about existing positions? And this process is going to pass existing positions then?
I'm sorry to hear.
The process that you're going through is for existing positions then?
Therefore, existing positions, but also if it's a new position, the process would, that's the extra step.
Yeah. In reference to the comments about the candidates and looking to make sure they have a diverse background, can you go a little bit more into that? Like what specifically you're looking for to qualify as a diverse background? And if somebody doesn't have a diverse background, if they would be excluded?
No, we would look for experience as it relates to the vacancy. And we would look for any professional development or preparation for the position. There's a slide later on where I'll show what our goals were. When it came in September, we had goals in order for us to mirror our student demographic and population. Therefore, that's one of the demographics that we would be looking at when we're looking and screening through applicants.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
We had a request for information that included current vacancies. This is outdated already. We have some of these positions in process. So they might still be posted. We don't take down a posting until, you know, the person signs their contract. But at the time that this was run, September 19th, these were open positions.
Thank you, thanks. This was my question. Considering the staffing shortages that every industry, everyone is experiencing, this is really not too bad. I expected it to be, I asked for it because I expected it to be a very long list. And I found it very important. So, thank you.
Great, great. Take a lap for my team. They've been working really hard.
I have two questions. BCBA system Y. What is this?
That is a behavior certified behavioral analyst.
Okay, that's fine. And my second question is, the safety school monitor versus a school monitor? Mullen Hall and Northfellow? Those are two different positions?
Yes.
Okay. The school, the school safety monitor, new position.
Yes. And the school monitors are positions that we had from COVID.
Dr. Stacey, I feel like we talked about this particular question that I had in the past. The five resignations, do we have exit interviews on there?
We have discussed it. I think we have to have a little bit more discussion because I have been doing some research based on your question around transfers from school to school. I think that was your question?
Yes.
But yes, we do, I do have a exit survey and some interviews if the individuals want to sit one-on-one. September, I have put those on ICE. I will be picking it back up because the priority is making sure I have people in the seats. But I have reached out to several people who have wanted to have an appointment and.
Great, thank you so much. I look forward to that.
And here is another slide that was also part of the request for information. New hires, transfers, and promotions. And I went ahead and put some historical data in there so that you could compare it to something. And also the percentage of change from one year to the next. And so you can see where we were when COVID hit in the 1920 school year and then went up 177% when we prepared to launch our COVID year, our full COVID year. And then 18% for 2122. And then we're down 21% from 21 to this year. But I do want to call out that that doesn't mean that we haven't hired some very key staff. The staffing has been really focused on making sure that we have social emotional support for the students. So even though you see that it's gone down, what the reason it's gone down is because we've had individuals that we no longer need those positions. They were COVID-only positions. And we were really thoughtful about bringing folks on board that could potentially stay in positions once we had the regular attrition of resignations and retirements from the COVID hiring. And that's proven to be a really great place to start in terms of finding folks that we know were able to pivot and join the team and do a really good job. I know TAs and one-on-ones and teachers. Any questions about this slide? And again, I did some historical data. I just wanted to show you this one really quickly from 2021 and then 2122. Before I shared where we are now. So 2223, we added a new, a new job fair to the mix. Mer came back in person, the Massachusetts Educational Recruitment Consortium is one of the biggest ones in the state. So when they came back in person, that was a big deal. And also the MPDE Fair, which is the Massachusetts Partnership for Diversity in Education, which we participated in for several years, even before my tenure here. And our demo doc with information in terms of hiring, what it looks like so far for this year. And this next slide, we'll recall it from my June presentation. The fifth column, goals for 2223, is what I presented back in June 28. And as of 9/19, we've been able to start impacting those numbers. I'm hoping that as the year continues on and we keep filling positions, we're able to impact our numbers as well. And I just want to remind you that the number in parentheses is number of full-time equivalents. That's an employee. So in June, we needed 14 in order to mirror our student population in African-American hires, and we're at 11 now because there have been three additional hires. So it's a, it's a very promising, I don't know that I can do that every single month, but it's very promising that from June to now, our numbers are going in the right direction.
Any other questions for John? I just have, it's just a comment, really. It's going way back, but I wanted to hear your updates on all of the hiring before making it. So under the interview process, you don't, you don't. It says that the interview process will be supported by the Office of Human Resources and DEI and Belonging through trainings and workshops. And I just wanted to comment on how important I think that piece is. And I'm really glad that it's included because we know that there's bias in hiring in society. And because people hire, tend to hire people who look like them. Since our administrators are not particularly diverse, we want to make sure that they're, you know, have self-awareness and participate in workshops and trainings to, to make sure that they're looking for the right characteristics, asking the right questions, and not necessarily allowing their implicit bias to be affecting their hiring. So I'm really grateful that that's in there. And I hope that it will have an impact on, on hiring in years to come.
We have a pretty awesome group and they're very open to being able to be reflective about hiring and diversifying the staff and also of the support needed. You know, I do think that we are in the same mindset around it's not enough to recruit. You have to simultaneously be preparing yourself to properly support that employee coming in. And so that's been really exciting. And we've already started that in the Superintendent's Administrative Council meetings. So it's a series of professional development.
Yeah, I didn't mean to say that, you know, that we had issues in our hiring. It's just that as people, people. So I'm glad to hear that our, that our administrators and our new departments took that on. Thanks.
So first of all, thank you so much. It's so great to see these numbers going this direction. Obviously, a lot of hard work behind it. So I appreciate that. I think that you were just mentioning support and it was getting me thinking in terms of building in all of those supports to not only retain individuals here, but also, you know, you really want to see a lot of this reflection of our student population in their teachers that they're spending the most amount of time with and not just looking at staff as a whole. And so I guess I'm just trying to think about, do we need additional supports? What do you see? Like, what else do we need to help people, you know, as a, as a district, right? To feel supported and, you know, want to be part of this district? And, or is it just, is it a larger problem with, you know, find the town, right? We know we have affordable housing issues, right? So is it more complicated than anything that we can control from the school side?
Well, I think you can only control what you can control. And so what we can control is how we're supporting people who come to work in our district, no matter who they are, right? How we're supporting them. If I can quote Henry's quote, "A beloved community." That has to be for all, right? Everyone needs to feel that way when they're not only, not only working in the district or having the children in the district or living, working in. working in the district or having the children in the district or living, working in Falmouth. Being able to feel that way out in the community. And so as a school district, as long as we are always keeping our finger on the pulse of that mutual respect and professionalism, I think that's one thing. And if we're investigating and being thoughtful about our own implicit biases, other issues that we may have not been talking about publicly as of late we are, and that's a good thing because it allows us to stretch and grow and to question sometimes some things that we're taking for granted. And so I think that the professional development that we're doing with the Administrative Council is helpful in making sure that things that we weren't thinking about before, we're thinking about now. Like when you're checking in with a teacher who might be, you know, a transplant, right? They're not from the Cape, they're not from Massachusetts, they're not from Falmouth. Being really explicit about that check-in. How are you feeling when you get into any place? Where, you know, how, how are your parents treating you? How are the students? Being really specific about that, not just the "how's it going?" Because in the "how's it going?", you're not really getting to the bottom of, I'm being really explicit about hoping to support you as a person of color. How, how are the parents with you? How are the students with you? Have you noticed anything? Being really explicit about that because one, it tells the person that you're working with that you see them, that you know this is real, that you're willing to be supportive and to talk it out. And if there's something that they could do, that they're willing to do that, right? And so we don't typically engage in those conversations. And those are conversations that when you see the, the research and then the data out there, people who come from marginalized communities, who don't find themselves in these professional positions very often, feel like an only or a one in their school, in their department. And need to be asked explicitly, "How can I support you? What does that look like for you? What do you need from me?" And if they don't have the answer now, come back and ask again. Think about it because this is an important piece. And so I really do think that continuing to ask the question is helpful because it keeps it at the forefront for all of us. Right? It's not like, oh, it's the flavor of the month. It's, this is important for us and we know that it's going to take time and it's going to take effort and intentional effort.
Margaret?
Yeah. I should be congratulated on the ability to increase the diversity. I think, you know, those numbers are very good. But I think it's really important to look at the previous slides. It sort of talked about where these people are going in terms of what positions. Because there's, I don't see many teachers. In those slides.
Yeah, we have some teachers.
So I just want, I just wanted.
Thank you so much for bringing that up because we don't have enough, right? And so the superintendent and I have been talking about consistently bringing data around the professional staff and other, you know, the professional staff, not just teachers, but our nurses, everyone else. And seeing what those numbers look like and setting some goals in that area, for sure. But I will point you to the twenty-two, twenty-three slide, which is slide fourteen, where we do have a teacher, Unit A, a school adjustment counselor, and two central office. So I mean, that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean, I, I'm just to Margaret's point, and I don't know if I'm the same line here, but this, this breakdown is district-wide, but doesn't break down to administration, building, principals, teachers, support staff. Is there a way that we could do that and then run those numbers along the district student numbers? Because I'd be interested to see where the diversity is. For instance, I'll go back to slide fourteen and central office admin, these two gentlemen here are in there. I'll give them a shout. So my question is that now Alex and Henry are part of the eleven?
Yeah.
Yeah. So if we could break it down further, it kind of gets better understanding of where.
Yes.
And then I saw some, something else on the other page. I want to say with like transportation cafeteria, and we talked about that a few months ago, about that whole thing. So if we could do that.
Yeah, that could definitely be on the breakdown. I, I think too we should key in on the, on the less numbers. That's progress. You know, maybe it isn't as much as we want, but it is progress. So I applaud you for that. I mean, the number that went from fourteen to eleven, progress. So.
Agreed, agreed. And it's a, it's a joint effort. So I don't want to sit here and like take all of the credit.
Our hiring managers do some recruiting. The HR staff is relentless at recruiting. And so the end of the day, it is a group effort. Otherwise, it can't be done. No one first, I don't have a cable. No one person can do it alone. It really does take a, a team effort. But what I do see my role as is the person who wants to keep this in the spotlight. Keep it in the spotlight, keep it moving forward, keep us progressing, getting us through, you know, the sticky, you know, difficult parts. I'm, I'm a realist and I know sometimes this work comes with some stretching that needs to happen. But I think that we're willing to do that stretching, right? If we're willing to do that stretching, then we'll be fine.
Right. And you're keeping it in the spotlight, but also the district and also the school community. So we are on the same page with that. Any other questions or comments for John? Thank you so much. Thank you. Yes, and so we will circle back to the item on our agenda, presentation by the Wampanoag Tribe Education Department. Or I'd like to introduce Maya Landry. She's the grants manager at the education at the tribe. And she's here to talk about our partnership. Yes, please come forward. Thank you.
Again, I'm Tali Wangji. I'm just one of the grant managers in the education department for the Wampanoag Tribe. One of the grants that actually has a partnership with the common public schools as well as the Mashpee Public Schools. We're also working with other, trying to work on other districts as well, but we'll start here. So yeah, just a little bit. I'm sorry, I didn't have a formal presentation, but I figured it would be overload of information. Presentation right now, after all the work, you know, that just we've been doing with, you know, your administrations and your faculty and some of the stuff that we have going on. But you guys should be very proud of what you have here in Falmouth and to what this is going to become. So my, basically my grant right now is drug services to Native students, so any student that identifies to be Native American. We also have, the tribe also holds the Indian Education Grant for the common public schools. So that's the same situation as far as any student that identifies. We do obviously have to be counted and send in a five or six form. And then with my grant, it's actually a parent consent form. So we'll basically can make sure that we have that student, student data sharing consent from our parents and we can work towards, you know, having a better success for our Native students. That's one of our big goals and our mission in the education department is to have better success rate within education for our Native students, but as well as just overall success. We really focus on, you know, infantry to elders. We provide services as far as education when it comes to cultural and academic. My grant focuses on it all. So I have every aspect as far as college and career readiness, academic support, and drug services included, cultural programming, and as well as just kind of support, like we support students going through driver's ed and things like that, you know? And especially if they need like, you know, transportation to school or academic support or tutors and stuff, we will support that. Some of the programs that we currently have going on is Orange Shirt Day is coming up. I'm sure a lot of people like that now. Thanks. You're a great team.
Can you tell us how we learned about it when we came to those venues?
Oh, yes. So we actually held a teacher conference back in August, yes, where we initially kind of introduced the, the premise behind Orange Shirt Day. And then it filtered on into when we met further on the upcoming months. But basically, Orange Shirt Day started within Canada when the first mass grave site was found at an Indian boarding school. And that really trickles on the whole movement throughout Canada, but as well as now it's trickling into the United States because obviously we're all kind of one and we all experience the same things. So Orange Shirt Day really just gives that awareness of behind, you know, Indian boarding schools, what has actually happened there and really recognition, recognition to the children's lives that were lost because those weren't accounted for. So, you know, families have gone with not knowing where their children have gone and not knowing anything really. So that it's really to promote, not promote, but to advocate for, you know, for more awareness as well as more, I wouldn't say repatriation, but rediscovery, of really looking into these schools and really trying to find out what actually happened there and connecting the dots. Because a lot of what we do, like what we discussed at our teacher conference, is the effects of what happened. Because within our Native American culture, we have, along with many different cultures, is intergenerational trauma. And a lot of that is stemming or stems from, you know, what has happened at Indian boarding schools. And that really goes across America and in Canada. The Indian boarding school that our tribe was forced to be, was brought children, not brought children to, children were moved to go to was the Carlisle School. And that was actually the first boarding school to be formed in America. So just to know that, even little premise, it's not just in the West, it's not just in Canada, it's right here. You know, we have relatives that actually been to boarding school and went through that experience. It might not have been as harsh as maybe our ancestors, but they do have that experience and, you know, were in those halls and had to do those certain things. So I don't really want to get too deep into that because it is, it's pretty harsh and it's, it's very emotional because, you know, we're all humans and you can just imagine what it would be like if your child was taken from you and never to return. And then also just the premise of what was going on there to, you know, kill the Indian and save the man was their whole premise. And, you know, the government was funding it and giving out grants. And they were popping up like crazy around America to really try and push this assimilation and the forced trans side of Native Americans. So that's what we do within, within our education department is where we help with advocating for our Native students within the school place. But we also help with trying to educate, especially the educators, because that's where, where it starts. You know, what they're learning in school is really important. And for such a long time, there has been a false narrative that's been going around. And it's, it's very recent that, you know, teachers are interested in actually teaching the truth and are ready to handle that. Because it is, it's hurtful, you know, and it's hard. And depending on the age, it's, it's very sensitive. But we've been doing this for a long time because we've been having to do this with our kids forever. So we've been having to teach them how to go through a school that wasn't really formed for them, that was formed against them. So that's how we kind of keep moving on with our Native students. We find programming that helps, you know, boost their confidence, gives them self-awareness as well as kind of confidence in their self-identity, as well as knowing how we learn and picking up on those certain things and providing resources so they're able to execute that and to be more successful. So we can hopefully get them through that graduate line. And we really, we focus so, like I said, we focus so much further than that because we're, this is our homeland. We stay here. And kind of like the thing that I say within Mashpee, when I talk to like the Mashpee faculty, like whatever you do here to Native students, you will see forever. So if you plan to be in this community, you will see that decision wherever you go because this is our home base. So no matter how far we go, though, you know, all the students will always be back. You'll most likely be seeing them more than not because we generally stay very close. But that's just, you know, how we, why we stayed here for so long. How we existed so long is by staying so close, really just being there for each other within a tribal sense. But a little bit more details as far as the grants that we offer. So like I said, my grant, we have the Orange Shirt Day coming up. We will be delivering orange t-shirts to the Falmouth School Districts for the Native students to wear. But we're really advocating for all students to wear Orange Shirt Day, Orange Shirt that day to, you know, support and to hopefully educate. We did give some curriculum, I think, to, you know, the teachers in case they wanted to have a, have that conversation with their students. So they know why they're wearing that one shirt. We'll actually be standing around the Mashpee Rotary. I think it's at five or five-thirty on Friday to kind of just bring awareness to it and be there and support. And we'll wrap up with like a social afterwards at the building. So everybody is welcome to join with that. Another thing we have going on is the work class that we put on every Monday night for grades six through twelve. So that really, we've had our first one yesterday. And it was really good to get the kids around, you know, in that age group. And it's really been just, they're learning the craft. But our intent with it is really to get them in a safe space and comfortable and things like that. It seems to be workable. So it was a good first one. So we started, we had the workshop, so it goes all the way through December. So every Monday through December, from six to eight. And then we also have a ribbon skirt making class that's going to start in November and that's going to be every Tuesday to January. So those are just some things to kind of look out for and spread the word about. We also have some presentations coming up. I know with the Falmouth Schools, they will know the dates better. And that seemed to be very successful last year. So we're really excited about that. Really, even just within our students, it was really nice to see them, you know, they really, they were just smiling and just so comfortable and just, I don't know, their just confidence really came out. And even some of the teachers were like, oh my God, I haven't seen them laugh so much. Or, you know, they were actually coming to us and saying like, "Thank you for coming." It's a huge difference within the student. So it was really beneficial to have that and I'm happy to keep continuing that. Another grant that we have is the State Tribal Education Partnership Grant, which that is really focused on educating the educators. So that's how we funded the, you know, the teacher conference that we put on. And we do also do the presentations and things like that, but as well as like our direct services within the one-on-one. I've been working with Mike Feeny a lot within his, within the history, but also the social justice. And then as well as we're, what is the new class? Sovereign? We're involved with that as well. And then also within the Indian Ed, you know that Kitty is Indian Ed Coordinator. So she does a lot of, you know, after-school type things with those, with those students and offers that. So I really, we really wanted to make sure we have a presence here and make sure that you guys see your face as well. I'm just one person on the team, but you'll see people kind of come in and kind of take turns. And we'll have more kind of a layout of what we have going on and what we've done within Falmouth and within the district. So you guys can be more aware of that. And we're always open to suggestions, suggestions or presentations or anything that you guys really want to push in there. We're also, we're open door, you know, if you just give us a call anytime that you need anything, even if it's a question on a history fact, we, we advocate for that. We really support that because we don't want, you know, false information going around. Any questions?
I have an easy one. This D-making, you said a skirt making?
Yes.
That's next to the Mashpee by the Kids Museum?
Yes.
Okay. Is that open to any student six to twelve? Or how does that work?
So that, so where we service for is for the Native students.
Oh, that's one, that's one question.
For the cultural program. But as far as like the presentation and education part, like when it comes to history class and stuff like that, that's when we're opening that to, you know, everybody.
And follow-up question. Is that something that you could transport to the schools?
Well, that's kind of a big goal of mine. To be here. Because, you know, we really would like a presence within the schools. I mean, we have some of the presence in Mashpee. They're used to it. We're right down the street. But to really get into Falmouth and put the, the faces really into the classroom, not classroom, but into their school where they're comfortable and getting them used to that. Because the Falmouth, the Falmouth Native students aren't used to that yet because we just haven't made that presence yet. But if we can, it's our big initiative to try and either be like after-school or like in-school because we really want to meet the kids where they're at. And I know we're like talking about language and stuff like that. So hopefully that will go further. But any opportunity, I think we have to get creative because there's so many schools. But any opportunity to really get in there is, you know, what we're advocating for. I really was, would like to push, you know, to even have like a set time to go in or even just even after-school day. Because we can even provide, we can provide transportation. So that's one thing that we have and we'd love to be able to offer it anytime, you know?
Because you have the actual activities and that sounds like, you know, a smaller class or smaller, you know, because definitely kids want to do the arts and craft stuff and you're learning at the same time.
Yes.
Thank you very much. That's all I have.
I have, go forward here, Terry.
I was gonna say, I'm amazed that you didn't have any notes. You've covered so much information. And your enthusiasm definitely spread in this room. So thanks.
Thanks very much.
I wonder if you have any members that are teachers?
I'm not sure.
And then I'm wondering if there's anything that you're going to encourage members to become teachers?
So through our step grant, we do, we offer financial aid, so she did go through Falmouth. Jocelyn, we're actually, she just graduated college recently. She definitely went through Falmouth, I just don't remember her last name right now. But we helped her finish her degree for teaching. She's actually working at the tribal school part-time right now, is looking to, you know, finish what she has to do and then go into, you know, the school district. But we are trying to advocate for that, because we do have that in our, in our step grant to be able to provide financial support for anybody interested in teaching.
Thank you.
Yes.
That was a great question, Margaret, thank you. Terry?
I have another comment. Andrea and I worked with some of your colleagues to write the land acknowledgement.
Oh, yes.
I was glad, and amongst all, all the things that you told us, like you're talking about teaching the teachers, because, I mean, I consider myself pretty educated. I didn't realize that federal government took land all over the country for the universities from people. So it is good to educate the educators, that phrase you use, so.
Yeah, it's key, and you don't know what you don't know, you know, and everybody's taught different things wherever they go.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
So any other questions?
Just a comment, I just want to plug the professional development, it was phenomenal. First of all, I did go to the first one, and the teachers came back and said, oh my goodness, this is awesome. And then I experienced it, and it's, it's a fantastic program. And that's when we did learn about the boarding school. And I love how you say, we don't know, we don't know, that's equity. We need partnerships with the, the tribes to help us with that equity walk. And finally, when I was, I, I emailed, when I, when we first learned about the Orange, the Orange Shirt Day, I emailed all the principals and said, we're gonna do this, and they're like, what is it? And I, I, I contacted you, can you give us lesson plan? And right away, lesson plan for every grade level, boom, 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 we were able to send that out. And so that partnership is just really benefits, and I appreciate that.
That's wonderful. Mr. Bushy?
Hi, I'm Tom, one of the seven principals. And we have been promoting the Orange Shirt Day on Friday, to families and staff and the students. And my question is, I just want to verify that, I think those shirts are awesome, but for our non-Native American students, they should also be encouraged to wear orange shirts. And if they don't have an orange shirt, is it, would it be appropriate or not to try to do like a ribbon or something for kids who wish to, you know, show, to show solidarity?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Yeah, and like I said, we do have, you know, we are making deliveries to, you know, this, for our orange shirts to the different, just schools for the native students. But if we have, you know, we'll have extra, so if the kids really want some, we'll, we don't turn kids down, we already have. I think Kitty went to Open House yesterday, I think, and she was saying, I don't know. There's more about the ego, what the cause is.
It'll take like four hundred and seventy. I'm serious, though, I think a lot of the kids are gonna want it, are, because they've been, they've been learning about it, and they're gonna want to know, they're gonna want to show support, so. But they know, I know they don't all have orange, so.
Yeah, I know another thing, because we are doing an activity, we weren't, we didn't get it in time, I think for Falmouth and just figure out the seven schools. But we're doing an activity tomorrow in Mashpee where they're like making the orange shirt. So, you know, doing like handprints and stuff like that. And that's always, we're trying to encourage that, especially with the younger kids, because that's kind of a better way to have that conversation with them. Because obviously, there's gonna be some sensitivity around it, but it doesn't matter any age, like a kid's gonna understand without being, you know, completely heartbroken. Like, you know, we're, I'm sure we're all parents here, so we know how to talk to children and what age they are. But that's just another thing that we can suggest, like give a white T-shirt, and if you got some orange paint, or you know, even the classes, you know, as far as art or anything. I'm not sure how creative they can get, or if they say, you know, bring a white shirt in, and all the kids with the white shirt, you know, on Friday or something.
Thank you, appreciate it, thank you.
Awesome. I have a question from Mr. Bushy from the Lawrence families. Would dress code be withheld on Friday if they choose to wear an orange shirt in the event?
Yeah.
Parents couldn't find an orange collared shirt?
We usually do in those events, I, I'll get with my people and promote it tomorrow afternoon, Thursday morning. Yeah, like, it will be something that will be common for us to do, to say, you know, if you don't have an orange collared shirt, if you still have an orange shirt, that would be okay.
Very good, thank you.
Good questions.
Any other questions or comments for Tali?
Sina, thank you so much for joining us.
One more question, Tali, I have lots of questions for you, but I feel like not right now. So how, what's the best way for me to reach you?
Oh, well, I can give you the contact information, but I wouldn't make sure, I can give the teams, can I give it to, you know, someone administration to?
Sure.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
To make sure, because I did want to make sure to give you guys kind of like the background, who the director is and the grant managers. I mean, you really could contact any of us, and you'll be able to find the answer, because we'll, you know, point you in the right direction or just give you the answer right away.
Sure.
But, yeah, I'll make sure.
Thank you. Well, thank you so much. Thank you for having us and giving us the time, hope to keep on coming back.
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you.
Next is a presentation of social and emotional supports by the Director of Student Services.
All right, so thank you for giving me the opportunity to share out what we're doing to address social emotional learning and bigger of what needs here in Falmouth Public Schools. I know that I have presented out several times of what we're doing, so I just want to reiterate that the Falmouth Public Schools, you know, as a district, we recognize and prioritize the social emotional learning for our students. And we're committed to ensuring that we are, in fact, prioritizing as we continue. So I think everyone here is very well aware of our well-established programs within the district that provide support for our students. Those being our bridge program, so our bridge programs for students that are transitioning back into school after they've had longer-term absences. We have our connect program, and that's more of a specialized program to support students' behavioral health needs. We have our coordination meetings in every single one of our buildings for individual students. And those consist of the school administrators, nurses, counselors, psychologists, and then other relevant team members. And that's really to discuss very specifically individual social, social and emotional supports for students that have been identified that they need some interventions. As a district, we have, I think, especially this group right here, is recognized that we happen to increase the number of counselors that we've had in the district. So to date, Falmouth Public Schools employs twenty adjustment counselors, seven guidance counselors, and that includes a gap counselor. And I apologize, it's not all capitalized, but it sounds like an acronym. Thank you very much. Here we go. Thank you, Kelly. And we have five school psychologists, and these are often the standing needs of our students that we recognize that, you know, post-pandemic, we're seeing more social emotional than behavioral health needs in the district. So with our gap counselor, the gap counselor, that's the graduate assistance program. And that's dedicated at the high school level for keeping students connected and engaged, really in an effort to make sure that students that were providing them with those supports so that they meet graduation. It's a, it actually is an area of professional development today for, for some of our counseling staff. We have a cohort of thirty-two students that are involved in that program in grades nine through twelve. We have our counseling groups within, at the different levels, and our counseling groups are working and addressing topics such as grief, anger, control, things that, you know, we are also noticing have been byproduct of our, our living through the pandemic. And then another piece that's newer, but we have the opportunity to have, Alan Gazarian, the Director of our Guidance Department, Keith Foul, one of our high school guidance counselors, presented down here, a school committee about the Hope Squad, the new initiative that we have in the district, and that is the, it's the suicide prevention and awareness. And that is where we have our, our high school counselors being trained and being provided the, the curriculum. So then they'll be training students. So what we found is that, you know, that, you know, students helping students is the best way to promote, ensuring that, that any concern that a student has, if they're sharing with their peers, their peers have the sets and resources to go to trusted adults that know how to address that. I know that I've also presented out about the DASIS screen, that's the devil of stuff, the, there was a mini screener and the full assessment that we're doing. And what that is doing is the mini screener is doing for, oh, my parents. So I don't know, did I not switch to the slide? And the, the screener is, so the K to six, excuse me, K to eight. We have a mini screener in which a trusted adult, teacher, counselor, someone that knows the student fills out a question screener. Students throughout, three times throughout the year, and then in nine through twelve at the high school level, knew last year was a self-report from the students. So it is connected to our, the aperture platform, and within that, it has all curricular resources that we're using. So when we first, what we know is that we now have the data from spring of twenty twenty-one for our students in grades K to six. And then we have last year's data, K to twelve. And so as we continue to administer the mini screener, we're gonna have historical data on the students that's really gonna help us to identify the eight competency areas that are aligned with CASL. And those are the social, emotional competency skill areas, such as resilience and problem solving in the different areas. If a student is, if the results for a particular student come out with more of a, there's, there's, students that fall within the typical range, and then strengths for immediate instruction. So any student that has a immediate instruction, the protocol is then to go into a full screener, so that we can gain more data on that. And from that, what we can do as a, you know, with the, with the, the data that we have, we can look at that at the district level, so we can see what our overall district needs, where, where our biggest priorities lie for our students in the district. We can see it at the building, the principals can see it at each one of the building levels. Then we can see it at the classroom level, and we can see it at the individual student. So it really helps us to identify not just a one-size-fits-all for students, but that we really truly can move the intervention. So as we all know, social emotional learning is the responsibility of everyone, to all, every staff member that works in the district, every teacher. And then as the continuum of interventions, when we know different needs, that's where we may see that it's starting to shift to potentially some of our counselors, or that may even hit to the point where we may identify somebody with some specific sports and services through a, through special education, MIP. So it is very beneficial that we're gonna have the historical data, so that folks can see whoever, in the moment, not, teachers only have access to the students that are on their particular caseload for this. But you will be able to see where they, where their scores were from previous year, so we can see where the trend data is there. Another big priority, I think this lines up very much with what we've been presenting out at the, in our meetings thus far this year. But we have a dedicated focus on racial trauma training for school adjustment counselors this year. This is a district priority, so we're aligning with all the work that we're doing with our diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging. What we're going to be doing is, we are going to be starting with our adjustment counselors, so that we can build into having more larger team-based training that we can do. So to make sure that we have the supports within the district for, for all of our students. We're doing this work with Dr. Sayana Labusi, and she's gonna be assisting that. We're starting in our, we'll be starting with our adjustment counselors through some racial trauma forums and continuing professional development. At every single building, we do have instructional support teams. This is a structured place that allows for teachers and other members to discuss interventions for individual students. And this is also a place where there's a potential referral for special education, so that we can make sure we have the continuum of interventions and then more, more targeted support. We also have mentor programs, I'm sure everyone is aware of this, especially, you know, the wonderful adult mentor programs for our VIX volunteer program. But we also have a student mentor program. Currently, right now, we have twenty Falmouth High School students have been trained by our counselors to be peer mentors. They have the capacity to work with up to eighty students. Right now, it's at Lawrence, Moore Pond, and Mullen Hall with our, with the roads to, you know, building roads, so that we can support all students. And these are more peer mentors, so kind of could be a big brother, big sister within our students here at Falmouth. And it would be for thirty-minute weekly sessions, so we're very excited about that. When we think about some, some softer skills and supports that we have, no pun intended, we do have our therapy dogs. And they, they visit the schools, and they do provide comfort and support in, in a different therapeutic type of milieu for our students. When we think about the continuum of need interventions, and when we really hit a point where behavioral health becomes a greater need, we do have more specialized services that we put in place. We have risk assessments when there is any type of significance concern for, you know, harm to self or others. So we have a continuum, you know, which based off of the need, our school psychologists, our school counselors, and outside providers are able to provide this. And again, we want to make sure that we're doing this so that we have the appropriate support for that student, their families, and whole school community. If needed, on that same level, the community, we do enough psychiatric assessments that we do. And this is more, when there's more significant concerns that we want to, and again, we do this to ensure that we have the most appropriate resources and supports for students. And we also have the crisis team interventions, and we work with BACO, we work with a variety of different organizations that we have our building-based teams. These are to make sure that we have behavioral health supports for our students. We have a very nice working relationship with Falmouth Police, fire, and key services as needed. And that's really more in the, in the moment, when there are some critical health needs within the buildings. All right, we also have fantastic community partners. It would be remiss to say that I can include them, I don't want to time include all of them this evening, but our, our biggest partners are McLean Hospital. We have doctor-level clinicians that work with us, they provide professional development to our staff. They do case consults, so we have the opportunity at every single building, they meet with, it is, they work with the special building administrators to arrange the schedule and determine what cases will be identified. And they can provide that level of case consult. They also do parent training, they provide, we push it out, they provide, it's through webinars, so that parents can utilize it in, we did student, I believe it was anxiety in adolescents and just meeting some of the needs through COVID. They are, they're web-based, so if parents are able to attend them in the moment, they provide us with a link, we posted them on our, our website. And they're, they're accessible for thirty days from the point. So we will continue to be providing those. McLean really does a lot of specific training in different types of counseling, D E T type skills with our clinicians. Most, all, but really a very focused relationship and skill-based with counselors in our, our bridge and connect programs. And they also are helping us to develop a much more salient curriculum, there could be a new curriculum for our social emotional behavioral specialized programs in the district. We have a partnership with Falmouth Human Services, they are absolutely wonderful. We have a partnership with Valentine and Services. They are absolutely wonderful resource here in the community. They do provide, they can provide. Immediate and temporary counseling for our students if we don't have the capacity to do that in the moment. They are able to address student and family services. We also identify coordination meetings with the public schools and the family. Service center. These are different things that we do to make sure that over and beyond social emotional needs. But then support for social emotional needs and those are housing, food insecurity, financial assistance. And, and other community supports to ensure that our students and their families have what they need to be able to come to school and be successful. We have a partnership with Cosmo, again, continuing this year. Those are wraparound services that. Go over and beyond the custom services that our school adjustment counselors provide. Again, we're providing common choice and those are cooking strategies and social emotional strategies for our students in our K to four classrooms. We will also have, this year will be implementing resilient youth and that is in grades five and six. That are volunteer has been providing resiliency lessons to every classroom in grades five and six this school year. Another new resource that we have in partnership, we have is behavioral health. They're here, they're located right here in Valmont. And they're able to provide adolescent, child and adolescent counseling from preschool to preschool. So we have really not. We have really not had. Strong or depth in our resources that have younger students needs and being able to help address the, that, the. Elementary, preschool, elementary counseling needs. So we're very fortunate to have them as well as they also have family counseling. Very, very excited. Suzy Hatman and Liz Rogers from Valentine Services and I have met with the folks over at behavioral health and. Really developing a nice working relationship there. So I'm very excited to have that. So just in conclusion through formal and informal supports, our dedicated staff, families and community partners, we're really striving to be means of all of our students. And, and as I said earlier, please note that our community partnership is extremely far reaching and I would be remiss if I didn't just acknowledge that I wasn't able to. Just be get each and every one of those. So I just want to give a special shout out and thanks to our counselors, our nurses and all of our staff. Who have worked so incredibly hard over the last few years and continue to do too. Their work and their dedication to our, our students is, is something truly to be recognized. So if, you know, we just want to say it's an honor and privilege to be part of this supportive community. Really, as we say, it takes a village. So. So thank you. And this is my question.
Sorry, I've been like virtual and then in person. Question about the mentoring program.
Sure.
So I guess, and this might've been a misunderstanding there I have when I was driving. You were saying that is it like big brothers, big sisters or is it big brothers, big sisters?
Oh, no, it's just, it's like the partnership of, so it's our family high school students, peer mentoring hours. Family students in Lawrence, Moore Pond and Mullen Hall.
Okay. And so I would follow a question to that. Does that align with VIPS's mentor programs or is it separate?
It's separate.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have three questions and one comment. First, to start with the comment, I just. I really want to give a shout out to Karma Choice and it's such an amazing program and I'm so grateful. That we adopted it and have kept it going through the years and I really have seen, since it's gone through the years, I have seen it. In the community, I've seen it, I've shared it with people in my profession, just little tidbits. So I really am super proud of that. Program that we have and I love that we still have it and it's still going strong. One question I have on the bridge program, please remind me of the grades that the bridge program students, like what, what grades are eligible for the bridge program?
Right now our bridge programs are at Lawrence and Valmont.
It is at Lawrence. Okay. Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And remind me, is the HOPE SPOT only still at the high school and is there a plan to bring it down to Lawrence?
Right. So if you recall the presentation with Alan Kazarian and Katie Fowle, we want to make sure that we start small but strong. Yeah. And really ensure that we're, especially with, when you think about what the topic is for the students that, that we're going to be training. So that's why we're starting at high school level. But yes, the plan would be to expand that.
I just, I really feel that. I love that we're starting small and strong, but I, I really, I'm probably gonna mention it again in the future, how truly important it is. At such a awkward time in your life, you know, it's not easy being a preteen and teen and figuring things out. So I love that. Again, another excellent program. I'm glad that we've adopted. And the mentor program, as Leah was just talking about with the twenty students at FHS. With thirty minute weekly sessions, when do they meet with their mentees, if you will?
When specifically during the day?
Yeah. Do they meet during the school day? Do they set up on their own, like after school or at night?
You know what I'm going to do? Get greater clarity on that, on the answer for that. Let me, let me speak with Alan and find out what it is.
They ask for the high school mentors that come to the Lawrence.
Yes.
They come when they have their, their scheduled time. So it varies, but when the high school meets will come and they link up with our kids.
So during the school day?
Yes, during the school day.
Thank you.
Very impressive. But I'm wondering, and you couldn't go through all of these resources. Is there something specifically geared to post? In terms of these issues? Yes, thank you for asking that. So the work that we're doing with McLean, the McLean partnership. While we were in COVID and going even from when we were remote, the, the professional development that, that the McLean clinicians were developing and presenting for us. Were, were very targeted about, you know, how to move through that self care. What are we doing both for students, for staff, for themselves as well as. Staff to support students and family. The parent workshops, those were very much specific about kind of. Coming out of COVID, what we experienced while we lived through that. Our counselors are very in tune to that based off of the needs of the students. And then the additional resource that we have with the behavioral, behavioral health. For our youngest, I mean, for all students, but we really were struggling with finding outside providers that could provide. Resources for our pre-K, you know, through probably, you know, more, you know. Teen, so that, that youth and adolescent piece. And again, all of those are very much minded. You know, the, the focus for that would be what people have experienced and, and what are kind of. Continuing to be brought to the surface because of the, the COVID experience that we have, the pandemic experience we have. You're welcome. Is there many? Yeah. I have, I may be studying in some other respect. Loss, bereavement loss. Is there any? There's, yes, that's, that is wonderful. So some of the counseling groups we have there, we also had opportunities to work with. Amy Wyman with Good Brief Kit Code and she also is doing groups for students. It's through more expressive therapy and therapy through that. But there are different providers that we have that when we know that there is, you know, loss, like an actual loss of a, a, a family member or someone close. That there's group counselors that we, there's Maria Joanna's place that is out of Boston University, I believe. That has done presentations with our school adjustment counselors so that our counselors have the, the resources to pass along. You know, or the referrals or more significant in those areas. And we'll continue to monitor as we're seeing different topics that are coming out that we don't know just yet, what might be coming our way. We're, we're prepared to make sure that we're finding the resources to address that. Pet loss, they were those. Loss of any, of any type across all of the ages of our, our students and our staff and our community members and kids.
I was just gonna, in the, they just peer mentoring programs are correctly classed, so the students earn credits and they go up during this school day.
Great.
Thank you. Angela. I have a question. I guess maybe specific to the individualized student assessments. Where in those assessments or any assessments, does parental consent?
Excellent. So the DESA, are you talking about the DESA?
Or any of these other, it said like risk assessments, psychiatric assessments.
So if it, the DESA screener, it's just a screener. It's a, it's a data, it's not, it's not like a norm reference or any of that. So it's not a parental consent. But it's like a benchmark testing, if you will, for some of our academic. Data point. Once we get into the risk assessment, the psychiatric assessment, all that, there has to be parental consent. So we do it through the same process that we do and we have consents for special education. So we send out a formal consent with notice as to why. We always contact the parents and talk through that. We don't just, obviously it, it is precipitated by. A more significant event and we would absolutely not conduct any of that without. Any other questions?
I just have a comment. I really thank you, Margaret, for bringing up the post care for COVID. And I, I really want to applaud the district for having post care for COVID. Especially as an educating, education, educational body, I guess, but really looking out for our community, for our family, public schools community. And ultimately, the families of our school community. It's not that easy and it's so important that, you know. Establishments are recognizing this time, this post COVID time. So I thank you and I hope that. Family Public Schools is now leading by example on this and perhaps other. Companies, entities in our communities and surroundings will take, you know, will see our lead on this because. It, you know, you, you can't hide, it's like grief, you know, you can't really hide it and put it in your, you know, finally got it. It's, it's really important right now for us all to kind of recognize what's happening with our culture. So thank you.
Well, thank you. I will, Alan Kazarian, Director of Counseling, did share with me today that the, there's about Barnes School County and it's all of the counselors. It, it's a group and they talk about resources and all of that. And, and it was just mentioned that they, they kept referring to what Valmont is doing. And when you have Valmont as kind of a model and say, but, you know, can you, can you talk to us more about that and how did you get that with the monkey? So. Thank you for acknowledging that because.
Thanks, John. I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Great. Any other question?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Okay. Next on our agenda is presentation of superintendent's draft goals for 2022.
We have all the slides. I'm gonna, I'm gonna do this fairly quickly, not reading every slide. So the goals, the first goal, focus on the social emotional learning. It's very important. Thank you, Joan, for everything you said, I think she's said it well, what our focus is. The standards, assessing of our students' needs, implementation of strategies, stakeholder engagement. I, I believe it's very important to, you know, always engage and see where our, our teachers, our parents, the needs are. In addition to talking with our students. And then we will have school committee presentations. Just to highlight a few here, you know, having, making sure that we have resources for our teachers and counselors. As I just said, gathering input, schools are adequately staffed. And continue to work with our partner agency and organizations. Goal two, a focus on safety. The standards. So a district school safety plan will update those. Stakeholder engagement again is truly important in our safety. So make sure that every courses are. And then the school district communications and school committee presentations. Just to, you know, how I view is, you know, conducting audit of our, our buildings. In our schools and not only, you know, the physical plant, but also just our, our procedures to make sure that we can improve the safety. We're returning to all of our student safety training and drills this year. Ensuring that the social emotional wellbeing is being addressed while we're focused on safety and engaging again all of our stakeholders. And goal three continues, this is the third year after goal three is the focus on diversity, equity, inclusion. The standards are just the measures, the director of DEIB goals and benchmarks. Do the district strategic goals and action steps of professional learning opportunities. Plan for improved staff and student inclusion, school and community engagement. The school and district communications and school committee presentations. And just to highlight a few. Making sure we hire for our equity audit and then setting our goals based on the equity audit. Continuing with our restorative practices, making sure that our, we have, we look at and increase our student inclusion in all courses. Examining our student discipline data, make improvements there.
Well, the last time, you know how long I went. Okay. Do you have any questions?
So how would you like any feedback or thoughts that we have on maybe things to add to reactions or like, I would like belonging to the equal free. How do you want that kind of, we want to talk about it now, you want us to?
Update it for everybody.
Yeah, because. You were rolling on the next meeting, so. Next Tuesday, you see?
Tuesdays are our school community break. So any edits on goals for this.
And not that every suggestion is going to be honor, but you know, I just.
Feedback by Nancy.
Andrea, can I take a question? A couple of times we admit there's it comes up as stakeholder engagement. So what is, how's that envisioned?
Through the coffee hours, I'm going to have specific meetings that I did before via round, social emotional via round. Safety. So specific topics as well as general opportunities. So face to face, we'll, you know, probably throw a zoom in there at some point. So that'd be easier for fans.
Thank you for that. That's first week of superintendent's values and timelines.
Okay. We made a couple of changes to give more time for. Measuring that goals are moving forward. Last year, this measurement took place in March. And this year we moved it up to April. So we've also changed having a meeting discussing the. Toward fulfilling of these goals in an open meeting. We changed the nature of it to sending emails to each member of the committee. So we'll remind you along the way. To read those, okay? Because sometimes the information that Lori presents is duplicated. I mean, and it's, that's okay. Information, we all need to hear things more than once, but maybe not in public. And Lori making slides and stuff like that. So it's going to put it on us more and less to read things. And not having presented on, on the slide. So just to iterate that, the big. It's not a big change, but maybe it is. It's a whole months different before. We review the, the progress. Did I miss anything? Those are the two videos on that. And obviously Leah will, perhaps you along the way to get me for deadlines. She's good at it. And she will give an explanation of the process because she's learned it over the years. So. If you have any questions, we really would like to get these loaded on at that next meeting. So please send questions to me. So please send questions to me and.
Yeah, Andrea. So I guess I'm trying to remember about the discussions that we had at the retreats. In terms of making some tweaks to how the cycle operated and that there was going to be some more formative or mid-cycle type of changes that we were going to possibly be replacing some of the observations. Remember that conversation and then getting incorporated. So there are a few things that we discussed. Number one opportunity, you brought this up, an opportunity to receive feedback from um, those who work at the superintendent, the closest to survey, creating a survey, probably mid-cycle. Um, and then also, we're gonna write an imperative for this, just an observation. Because we were saying that that, that they just didn't seem to be that constructive, right? And just by sharing that.
Exactly, and then getting what came to you out of that.
The opportunity for Lori to hear any suggestions in the cycle rather than at the end.
So we could come up with a form.
I think we talked, Melissa.
I'm looking.
You got to know.
I'm looking at.
I feel like we talked quite a bit about what that form might look like. I didn't remember it, but, um, from the retreat, but I remember it being something that I really liked as a classically.
Yeah, well, we were keyed in on the timeline dates itself. Again, I mean, it took a lot of energy moving, thinking about getting that extra month that we thought was real important for the timeline. As far as the forms, the things that we submit, we can work on that, right? Okay, after we approved this timeline, the timeline doesn't include the nature of the forms.
Right.
Really, um, okay, that's.
We're trying to make it more user-friendly.
Yeah, absolutely. I appreciate that. I think that though, if we're gonna approve like the observations, if we are going to move away from the three observations in January and three in April. Then we would have to make those tweaks before we go on it, just so that we're all on the same page in terms of expectations for school committee members.
So we could edit the observations then, okay? So before we do not send out the edited, um, comment or whatever to the whole group.
Yeah, I think maybe there would need to be revised first read of the evaluation timeline, once the evaluations of the committee had a moment to discuss what that would look like. And then that would be what we would. I just, I, so I don't, I don't know, like, I, I feel like the observations could still be in there. I think what, you know, really what, when, when we were discussing is just to have it be a process that's the most helpful as possible to Lori. Right, and I think the aspect of we weren't, people weren't getting those observations until the end. Instead of, like, if there was, if there were three that really happened in the beginning and that that could be included along with, um, Lori, the survey of, um, your, your staff or whatever, that we have additional pieces, but that there's something for, for feedback during that mid, mid-cycle. And I, I apologize, I was only at that meeting for one second, you know, I have a big event that happened. So I'm sorry about that. Um, so I can, I can work on the, the formative assessment piece. I think that was my charge. And, um, but I don't, I don't necessarily think that we have to get rid of the observation because it's just about using those in a little bit of a different way.
To summarize where she is. Where the superintendent is, um, you know, tracking her goals. I think that would be very helpful.
Yeah, so that does not require an assessment?
Well, I think as long as we all understand what that observation looks like, that it isn't attending an event and listening to the superintendent speak. But that maybe we're more thoughtful in terms of really looking at her goals and, and offering feedback on progress on her goals.
I'm not sure this was which one, but we took the job that, um, at the meeting, um, when there is a report from superintendent who isn't here. That we would document which goals they address.
Yep, that's best.
That's the yellow.
Awesome thing, we're in the yellow.
It's in the yellow wallet. Oh, okay.
And could you explain the observation more to someone who's new?
We have a whole evening, don't we? Set aside for that. Yeah.
We have some exemplars.
Yes.
One of my favorite words.
Yeah. Um, so what should we do for that as far as, um, when is that in our?
Timeline.
It's on a timeline.
Looking.
Because I feel like that was, we were doing that towards the end and I think that should be happening more in the beginning. It's more.
On the eleven, right?
Right, but I think, um, if I may speak for Margaret, I think she's looking for like, what does the whole kind of process and everything look like?
Thank you.
Overwhelming.
I wonder if maybe we could run a, just a, um, a meeting focused on that.
Just a workshop around that?
I just think that would probably be helpful for everyone to.
I think it would, it would also be a nice refresher for everyone.
Yeah.
Sorry, thank you.
Especially if there's going to be change. So if we're going to be, because I'm, I'm remembering a little bit more of the conversation from the retreat. I do think we should go back to the notes that we took because I think the ideas were really good. But I think we talked about having an informal, um, goal one. Here's, you know, Kelly Welch's take on goal one, my take on goal two, my take on goal three. And then we give all of that to Lori sometime in the middle of the year for her to have as formative. I have the opportunity to address any concerns that might appear in those, you know, and then go from there. So if we're going to have something completely new, we're going to need to have a workshop to figure out how to, or for you to tell us how we're going to do it. Well, I don't mean you, I mean evaluation, right? So Bill has his hand up. Bill?
Yeah, I would, I would just like to echo that about, uh, going over the form or whatever evaluation we're going to use sooner rather than later. It, I, I realized last year, it's, it's very hard to get that information already halfway through the school year. And then be able to look back and go, oh, well, that's, that's how they want it worked, or that's how they wanted to fit in. We should really have that information right now so that everything that comes into, you know, we, we come into contact with or see now. We can, we can look at through that lens rather than trying to go back and retroactive going, okay, now, now I need to remember, um, what it was that we were observing and, and, and try to observe it in a different way than we've thought about it for the last three months.
So we'll work on that offline, a date in October.
Yeah.
Thank you. Very much. Any other questions or comments regarding the timeline?
So can I just, if anybody comes up with anything, could I get it to me? Anyone else?
Okay, next is to act on the Lawrence memorandum of agreement, MOA goal dot time. And we, um, met during executive session to discuss this, um, to be consistent with our executive session. Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the memorandum of agreement, memorandum of agreement about goal dawn time for the work school.
And, and again, we had a very, um, informative conversation during the executive session, so we're just going to go ahead and vote on it. Um, it will be a roll call vote. We'll start with Bill.
Bill Dorfner, yes.
My Caitlin? Welchess, Germaners, yes. Yeah, Henriette, Anne Rayth, yes. Moskew, yes. Natalie can help us also, yes. So thank you for everyone in the district that were part of it. Thank you, FDA. And it was a great example of collaboration with that. Um, next update on fall time leaning items. Lauren, thank you.
We're going to slow down a little bit on this one. Um, just, uh, wanted to remind you that, uh, we voted, uh, or the school committee voted on July nineteenth for the capital. Projects, which, uh, normally in November, that's what we focus on is, uh, just in capitals. So you voted on, um, the new tennis courts, uh, and voted the, um, communication infrastructure at Fama High School. So the Fama High School tennis courts was, uh, we voted one point one million and the, uh, infrastructure was two hundred and fifty thousand for the new communication, uh, at the high school. Um, just as a reminder, our communication, that was, uh, for safety purposes, uh, both for, um, uh, it's, it's the, the cells, phones that don't work. So as we added navigate, it's very difficult for the communication during our drills, um, for the teachers to be able to communicate. But also it's, uh, we're a shelter, um, for the cake. So, um, so we needed an upgraded, um, communication system. So that's that. Um, just recently, um, there's been some, uh, talk, um, uh, in the community, uh, and a town that, um, perhaps, uh, the tennis courts, which we voted were asphalt. That concrete, uh, is almost double or more than double the lifetime of the tennis courts. And so there was some talk about, um, wanting it to be concrete and not asphalt. Um, I just wanted to make you aware of that right now. Um, I don't know where that's going. I am attending a, uh, finance committee meeting on October fifth, which, uh, where it will be discussed. Uh, I guess, uh, all the, uh, tennis courses that are approved through the, uh, CPC are concrete. Um, and so the town is, um, to look at that, but there is, um, a cost difference, um, I guess. You know, it costs more upfront, but they last longer, um, and the maintenance, I guess, are, um, is less. Uh, but there would be about a six hundred thousand dollar increase, um, to, to go with concrete. I'm just making you aware of that now. Um, I will attend the October fifth meeting. Uh, if anyone would like to go with me, that's, that's great. Um, we can, um, uh, learn more about what they're thinking, uh, where they stand about, and then I'll come back in October eleventh at our next meeting. Uh, and just kind of report on, on where they are on that.
I'm sorry, where, when is that, October fifth?
Yeah, okay, I can say, if you're interested, I can send you the.
I am.
The, the specific information.
Thanks.
Just, there's some information, uh, that was shared with me, um, that I'm passing along to you on the pros and cons of asphalt, uh, and concrete.
I have an asphalt, concrete question.
I'm not an expert here.
I know. I understand the finance part, but have we reached out to the stakeholders, the coaches, the students and what's commonplace across the Commonwealth? Because in the past, we've done fields in town that weren't the best. And then it just costs you more money over time as opposed to doing what's best for the athletes and the students the first time.
First time. Um, it's a good question. This all just happened, um.
Today.
At eleven o'clock today. So, uh, honestly, this is, that's why, like I said, I don't know a lot. I, I know what we read. Uh, I will certainly, I know, uh, they, they shared that, um, the town is moving more to the concrete, so townwide. But your perspective on, you know, what are other schools doing, what are they used to, you know, playing on, what will they compete on?
Yeah.
Uh, is a really important question. So I will gather that information as well.
Bill, your hands up.
Yeah, I, I guess right along with that, my, my question would be also the, the health of the athletes because these are, are students. Um, you know, the town wants to put something in public and whoever wants to come across it can use it. Um, just what the difference would be, wear and tear on a human body as far as asphalt versus concrete. Sometimes a little bit of difference makes a huge difference, um, on knees and joints. So make sure we have that information as well.
Okay, um, so the other part of that, um, that I mentioned is that, uh, what will be different, uh, in November uh, is the, uh, voting of the, the increase, uh, of the budget. So, uh, I gave you a little bit of, uh, information there. Uh, this is the chapter seventy dollars that are the, the state dollars that passed through the town, um, to us. Uh, this was determined that, um, that we would, uh, from the state level, based on our, um, pre-reduced, uh, lunch calculations, which have changed over time, um, which I'll talk about in a minute. But, um, based on that and the, the rise of our students that actually qualify, um, in that low, uh, low-income, uh, economic disadvantaged category. Uh, we qualify for an additional, uh, two million, two hundred and thirteen, um, thousand dollars. Um, that, we did not get it in the April buzz, uh, budget, just as a reminder, we talked about it several times in spring. Um, because we were waiting for it to get through, um, you know, the House, Senate, for the governor to, to sign. Um, and that all took place. So it, it has been signed, it's been designated. So the proposal would be that, um, from the town is that they would appropriate one point five million to this, uh, of that to the school. Um, they would retain, um, a little over seven hundred thousand because the charter school, um, uh, tuition reimbursement has also increased. And so they would retain that, that was, that's the projection of what that's going to cost. So, um, as, uh, we move forward and think about that, um, you know, it's, it's really important to understand that over the last, um, few years, we've had, had, um, several challenges, um, with our, with our finances. And if we hadn't had the, uh, relief funds, the, uh, COVID funds, the asset dollars that we actually received, we would not have been able to address the needs of our students like we have. You know, we were, um, you know, talking today, you know, just as a reminder that many districts, um, when they got their, their asset funds, they, you know, they, they had to spend it on infrastructure, right? And the heating, the venting, the, you know, the filters, uh, was really important. We are very fortunate that our buildings are well-maintained from our town. Uh, and so we didn't have to do that. And so we were really able to assess the needs of our students. Uh, so we increased, um, you know, the number of counselors, the number of special education teachers, teaching assistants. Uh, one-to-one aides, our English language, um, development teachers, um, reading specialists. Uh, so we were able to do that because of those asset dollars. So this money, um, is coming at a, an opportune time for us to be able to continue to fund those needs because we know the needs are not going away. Um, and so, um, you know, just that, that's where the dollars are meant to be spent. Um, it's around counseling, special education, English learners and, uh, our low-income students. That's, that money is designated for those, for that purpose. And, um, so I just want to, you know, I stress that, like, we, we know that we need to continue what we started. We've been fortunate to be able to address that over the last couple of years. And the asset dollars are, um, slated to end at the end of this year. Um, and so this is a, an opportune time for us to be able to continue the services for our, for our students.
Yeah. Um, question about our charter school tuition reimbursement, right? It's not usually.
The, the funds work?
Yeah.
If they, um, take it from the chapter seventy funds, that, so if you see like this year, the, the six point eight million, that, that would have been reduced to pay that and then they pass all the rest of the dollars.
Okay, so when you say they, the town?
The town.
The town reduces that, that much?
Yes.
So just a logistical question because this, this, the student opportunity act money is supposed to be targeted to these areas. But we're, seven hundred and thirteen thousand of this being retained for a different. Is that okay?
Yeah, I, no, it's, it's a good question, but it has been the practice of, um, the, I think it's Fama Stiffen. I think it's the municipalities, um, they have to pay those charter school tuition. But if you think about it, um, the charter schools have to address those same needs too.
I'm just, I'm wondering if it might be an issue that it's that money is being targeted for, but it's still, it's still coming out from us at, in some way.
I'm concerned with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I saw the same, same thing. Uh, the charter schools, I need to for income, students with lower income, of the charter schools in terms of proportion wise, getting a larger amount of the money depending on their population than we are in terms of population. I mean, does that?
The state actually does the calculation. Yeah, so it's, it's, um, it's not that our town that's, um, deciding on how. The state gives the town the calculation in which they have to.
They have to give the charter school?
And so that's why I'm thinking, because the, the population comes from the state, the town on. Because the the calculation comes from the state, the town, on how they figure them out.
Yeah, I'm I'm actually just wondering if it's not going directly to the charter schools, the additional funds for this student opportunity act that is coming from the towns. Then that this would make sense like.
Yeah.
Putting the money that way would make sense.
But that's why it's probably fine. Because that's how I think of it.
Yeah.
But we should check. I will check. Alex Monero. I just wanted to just real briefly talk about the the changes. Of how to calculate the the low income. There was a change. So they're restoring the level back to prior FY seventeen to a hundred and eighty five percent. So from seventeen to twenty two, it was a hundred and thirty three percent. The students identified are just paying in the state public assistance programs. Or certified as low income through the new supplemental data collection. So and then also through the thing Bento. So that those assistance programs. Are kind of where some of the calculations that they are restoring back to the higher rate. So and I'll be giving the. Historical data around that, but just knowing that when we look at that only eleven. Because we won't have all the numbers talked over once. So that's why I always give the presentation after that. We'll have the historic data, but but each year our kind of step, but it's it changes. It's it's not actually the same, but it was going back. So we'll see where we we follow on that one. Any other questions on that piece? So I just wanted to to share something I felt was very special. There was a twentieth anniversary of the partnership between Bridgewater University and the Cape Verde. They had a celebration on September twenty second. I was fortunate enough to be invited to. And I'm very proud to be part of this community. We were invited because of the good work of the town of. The Cape Verde Museum and Culture Center that started there. The Bridgewater has been extremely supportive. And extremely supportive of us as we're building our relationship. And so we had a presence there. And this isn't about me. It's about everyone, but we really only just represent. And so just. You know, when I just want to shout out that that we have the work that we're doing is really, it's really important. And it's special in that this strong relationship that Bridgewater has with Cape Verde that this is. This really helps us out because, you know, we were able to work with some, you know, key people at Bridgewater. And to be able to continue our building the partnership. And I know Terry started on their board. You know, several years ago, and we're, you know, it's really come a long way since they they started. We were one of the.
They have members in board too.
Yeah.
Not me, I was like.
I was like. Also humbled.
I was like a lead song. Or maybe I was, but they have, you know, the names.
Yes, and very strong. Yeah, yeah. So so members of the Cape Verde Museum and Culture Center. And myself, we were we were actually able to be there. So just, you know, we're working on our, you know, partnership that, you know, our students are able to visit the museum last year all every second grader. I think I mentioned before that was just a wonderful visit for our second graders. If you go into the museum, they've actually framed some of the thank you cards from the second graders. It it is really special.
See, what I said, it's really.
Yeah, really. They're probably are. The historical cultural inclusion in our curriculum is something that we've been working on. And and we are planning for opportunities for our students to be able to connect with students in Cape Verde. So firstly, we hope down the line, you know, Henry is is working with this too, but but perhaps even some visits. There for our students and for the students to to come here. So we're in the early stages. Bridgewater is part of the. The work in that. And so can't wait to to share more as as time goes on, but just.
So I know Brockton Public Schools has been doing a lot with Cape Verde. And actually, a few years, I think it was pre COVID. Did a trip, the staff did a trip to Cape Verde. So I think would probably be a great resource if you haven't already talked to them about this.
Definitely have. Okay, I I actually have not yet. I I know about it, but we have not talked.
And in my previous employment position, I was in Merham, and we did we had a sister sister. School relationship, and I also took kids there as well. So I'm very excited to continue here and it it is a spark to the community. I think we need this. Really a lot of benefits from that connection. So hope you do it here.
Okay, so we have several more updates. It's very exciting. There was a lot that really happened in the last several days and. But I want to turn it over to Mary now to talk about our commitment to maintain a school environment that's free of bullying, cyberbullying. And retaliation. And Mary's been has put together an excellent presentation that she's been working with our principals to make sure our staff's training. Presentation for our families. And she's even going to do one broader later on. Through Zoom for anyone to join in. I believe you have a presentation in front of you. I'm going to turn over to Mary to talk a little bit about. I think. So Massachusetts Anti-Bullying Statute, which is Massachusetts General Law Chapter Seventy One, Section Thirty Seven Zero requires that the. Training staff and also provide information to families, parents and guardians about bullying. And at the high school, I had done not as a comprehensive presentation to families over the years, but realized we really need to do more to get information out to families and. Let them know how we can partner with them and what they can do also to help support their children if they're going through bullying, cyberbullying, retaliation scenario. So I put together the presentation that you have. I met with all the principals because they're the ones that are sharing it out with their staff and with their families. The principals are doing it at their meet their teacher nights. However, we know that not all parents and guardians can get to those nights. So that's why I will. Once all of those evenings are behind us, I will lead a virtual Zoom and for anyone who wants to join and go through the presentation and answer any questions. All right, thank you, Mary. So. The next.
I have one clear question. I'm sorry to cut you off there. Mary, Dr. Dan, the statistics. Mary, the statistics and statistics continue. Those two slides, they talk about the different. Percentages, grades, levels, etc. There's a piece here about L G B T Q plus. There's nothing in here about students with I E P disabilities. I bet I can see I might be missing it. But is it true that I E P students with disabilities are bullied three times as much?
I don't know that it's three times as much, but we do have, we are required, and it's on one of the slides. It might be that.
I just skimmed it half.
Yeah, yeah, no. And you know what? Those were statistics that I pulled from CDC because the D C requires that we provide those that information to. Families and to staff, but D C also in our bullying prevention intervention plan, which I'm currently working on updating. It hasn't been updated in a while. D C has found that certain students, including students with disabilities, are particularly vulnerable to bullying. So yes, we definitely address that as specific student population.
That's what I'm I bought and skimming because I read like.
Yeah, no, that's a good point. Because CDC didn't include that. And then I think it's, if you look at slide thirteen, it does talk about that the plan has to. That certain groups may be more vulnerable and students with disabilities are included in that group.
Thank you, Mary.
May I interject on that too as well? So during the I E P team meeting, every annual team meeting, there is a requirement that the team addresses vulnerability. To bullying, to their being bullied or potential to be the buller based off of the disability. So that that's another area of a requirement that is addressed for students with disabilities and bullying.
All right, so we're gonna, as requested by a school community member, to give an update around the topic of vaping. This will be a two part series. I'm going to start with Joan to give a little more information about vaping in our school.
Thank you, Dr. York. So as you hear this clear, we're once again looking at the vaping usage of students across the district. Our work is we're going to revitalize our focus on the vaping prevention awareness, monitoring the student usage, and addressing usage in school with an educational net. So. We are rounding down September, but to date, our elementary schools in Morse Pond have no reports of student vaping. Lawrence reports two incidents of vaping and Farnes High School reported six incidents with six separate students of either possession of or use of a vaping device. With either tobacco or marijuana. Additionally, in high school, there have been concerns raised by both students and parents of students congregating in bathrooms and passing times and potential use of vaping devices. So again, it's that monitoring, it's that watching while not a reported incident. We want to make sure that we're putting a a focus to eye back on that. Because we recognize that as a result of COVID, there's some students in our community that adopted vaping habits as a coping strategy. In addition to just the the regular curiosity and influence that embody adolescents. So in response to any usage, our elementary schools are addressing the general wellness discussions during physical education health classes. And then they also have healthy choice conversations in classrooms and other and other areas of the schools, like the nurse's office and or the counselors or or whatnot. Morse Pond is implementing the educational models modules. So there's educational modules that are about awareness and helping people identify kind of the the health. Risks of vaping. So Morse Pond will be implementing those educational models, and those are really targeted, they're designed targeted for that age group. In response to the vaping incidents at Lawrence, same thing. First of all, students have to complete the educational model. Modules of nicotine vaping. So parents and guardians are informed, the student spends a portion of their day completing the modules. And then there could be the more traditional consequence as well. In the event that it's more of, you know, it's not the vape, but it's a marijuana vaping, students will still continue to engage in those educational models. Excuse me, modules, but then we'll also make sure that we're following, you know, the consequences as that lines in handbooks. But but just good to know also is that in both scenarios, any of the usages reported to the athletic director because of the notification notification of violation of the chemical health rule for student athletes. In and then in an effort to reduce use, the health curriculum at Morse, which every student is exposed to, has the standards for addressing healthy choices pertaining to. The pens and tobacco product, excuse me, tobacco products in general, as well as the marijuana use. We've increased staffing presence monitor, you know, that unstructured time passing back and stuff. We also both, you know, all the buildings were working with thousand counselors and we know the thousand counselors. Are providing wraparound services for counseling, but also with a focus of substance abuse and prevention. We've got some counselors that are renewing registered for some PD about addressing big pens. So we've got those preventative. Features in place. And then similarly at Farnes High School, students that are found in possession or use go through the education prevention curriculum. They meet with administration regarding a plan for change as well as restore and repair relationships. It's consistent supportive response on a daily basis with the hall, the hall supervisors and administrators, you know, checking. Checking in bathrooms and other areas where students will be more apt to be congregating. Then just actually this week, teachers are talking in each one of their homeroom classes about responsibility and respect in the bathrooms. There's, you know, the students saying things, students helping other students to make sure that they're, you know, there's that positive messaging that are going on. And when chronic uses identified, those students are being connected to counseling and outside supports. So as we move forward, we're going to continue to the work that we we were doing with our community partners in the Bart's County. To provide resources to our students and family. You know, one such example is we just, there's a virtual adolescent sensation group for teens. In need of support. It's through the project Connect. It's event adapted so that students can participate virtually. Or the skill facilitator, and that is open. It's grant funded. It's a six week virtual group starting October third, and it's available to middle school and high school students who are just thirteen to eighteen. So again, our students' health and safety is a high priority. That's why we're continuing to work to make sure that we've got supports and resources and that we're keeping an eye on it and we're trying. You know, get out in front of it or stay current with with the usage of our students.
Before we go to the second part.
Yeah, any questions? Um, so in some of the preventative work, especially at Morse Pond and Lawrence. Is that something that is like for a length of time or is that like a one or two day intervention? I'm just trying to think of, is there ways, are we more confident that it's getting to every student? Or, you know, with some extended, you know, absences due to still having COVID cases, that they could miss that in their, you know, whatever grade year that they're.
Excellent question. There is a potential that if that's their absolute, that it's being covered in that particular, you know, class or the curriculum unit. So those are things that we can look at to make sure that there's, you know, kind of tracking well student absences to ensure that there are that they're getting exposed to the same.
Because that might be one of those things that needs several touches.
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. And, you know, when we when we were doing this work pre COVID, we were also seeing that the. The vaping usage was really and nicotine use was starting to creep down into the lower grades because of some of the very targeted marketing that was happening. So. I want to look at some of that.
Margaret.
Yeah, I think the education is very important, obviously, but one of the one of the things that I think would be really good to. Be thought is students helping other students. Peer pressure is so important in terms of drug use. And any way that we can provide that support from other students would be much more helpful. Not much more helpful, but certainly very helpful.
Absolutely. Well, we know that that.
Yeah, I'm sure you do.
Positivity gets positive with students. Same thing with the Hope Squad and things like that when it's when it's peer to peer.
And if any student starts vaping or whatever, because of peer pressure.
So the second part, this just came up recently, as in last week, I'm going to turn over to Mary to talk about a national lawsuit. So we just found out, you know, just a little over a week ago, that there is a national lawsuit against Juul that a law firm out of California is. Representing school districts from across the country. Currently, over eight hundred and fifty school districts, I think, are involved in the lawsuit. Two from Massachusetts joined Wareham and Framingham. They actually joined maybe a year or so ago. And I actually spoke to the lead attorney myself, and he informed me that twenty five to thirty other school committees in Massachusetts are currently. Considering whether they are going to vote to join. The lawsuit is against Juul and Juul's number one investor, which I think of the L T or something like that. But the the premise of the lawsuit is basically like Joan mentioned, the targeting of adolescents. That it's created an epidemic by public nuisance, the inappropriate marketing efforts. And the law firm is representing school districts on a complete contingency basis, which means. As far as I can tell, I read the contingency agreement, and there's really no downside if the school district were to join. It's you if if they are successful with the lawsuit, then the school districts will get their pro rated percentage of the judgment or the verdict. If they're not successful, there's no financial, there's nothing. There is a form that the district, not the school committee, would have to complete with various questions about. Discipline data regarding, you know, Juul vaping, discipline data regarding other drug and alcohol use. Just curriculum, what we're doing to do to work with vaping, what our what our student enrollment is. And this is a mass. This is called a mass tort action. It's not a class action and not to oversimplify it, but in a class action, all the parties agree, they're a member of a class, and they agree that the verdict that comes will be. Shared proportionally among them. So regardless of maybe what your personal damages may be, you're agreeing to that percentage. In a mass tort action, a complaint, an individual complaint for each school district is actually filed by the law firm, but it is all. Coordinated into one lawsuit. And so then if Farnes were to choose to join. Our portion of any award, if any, would be based on number of students that we have. So for example, we don't have thirty thousand students. So another school district may get a larger percentage of the award. So for example, we don't have thirty thousand students, so another school district may get a larger percentage of the award just because of their student body size. Any award through the lawsuit would, the monies would go towards vape detectors in bathrooms, curriculum, extra emotional counseling support for students. The attorney I spoke to, his name is William Shinock, he's with the France Law Group in California. They have offices throughout California. If the school committee were interested in pursuing this further and just thinking about it, he would be willing to Zoom with you on either your next school committee meeting or the one after that to answer any questions you may have or provide further information at no cost. He will not, there's no fee in having him show up on Zoom. He understands we're Eastern State for time in East California. And so I just wanted to explain that to you. I don't know how many other Massachusetts school districts will be joining. He may have more information than. He did inform me, the first trial phase is starting November seventh. He is encouraging if school districts or school committees are interested in joining, that by the end of October, but even the October twenty-fifth meeting, if it was something that you're interested in, it's not too late to make a decision to join the lawsuit.
I have a question about that. In the details of an investigation, does it have the brand of the vaping device?
Juul is the brand.
No. You mean like if we have student discipline?
Yes, because.
No, but you know what? I think that I don't know that the lawsuit will get that nitty-gritty. It'll just be basically, you know, we have vaping issues in our school. Juul is the number one manufacturer. Juul has already been held accountable for inappropriate marketing towards teenagers with their flavors and all of that. So I honestly, I don't know if this case will be successful or not, but Lori and I thought it was something to bring forth to the school committee.
Okay, well, that's good to know that it doesn't have to be that detailed.
That's my understanding. That'd be a good question for.
Yeah, because it would be hard to go back into the data and look at what brand was.
Although I, Henry and I both saw it.
You see that, but you don't actually write it down like that.
Right, exactly, documenting Juul, right.
I think for me, before deciding to pursue anything like that, I would want to know more historical data on the breadth of the problem in the district. You know, I don't, we just heard some numbers for this year so far, but I don't have a sense for how big a problem we have. And I would want to know that before, which is kind of backwards because then it puts the burden on everyone to pull in all that data before we ever get that far. But then if we would set forward, I guess, all that data would then be already collected, but that's just where.
And I think part of, one of the problems with that data is Henry and I know from experience at the high school, we were only catching a small percentage of students who worked actually vaping at school. You know, it's a much greater, and we would get a report, go to the girls' bathroom, and of course, I was the female administrator, so I'm running into all the girls' bathrooms, and it's gone by the time you get in there. And then you start looking at the cameras and well, who was in and who was out, and you know, it's, it can be a very difficult process. I think one of the things that we had talked about and just never pursued was vape detectors in the bathrooms. Now, I know schools have had different experiences with those. Some administrators have said, oh, the kids work the lot or whatever. I actually told the kids at the high school that we had vape detectors, and we didn't know. That was pre-COVID. We were trying to tell them. But those are really expensive. So, you know, there's certainly grant funding sources that we could look into, but if this were something that the school committee was interested in, and if it was successful, that would be one of the potential benefits of any verdict would go towards, you know, how many bathrooms do we have and how many vape detectors would we need?
I appreciate Kelly's interest in how many kids. And I am going to get on the soapbox and say, if it helps one kid and if it costs whatever it costs to get the vaping detectors, it helps more than one kid. So from a healthcare perspective, we can't fix the popcorn lung. You know, there's, there's no way to fix it. So it's a drag that it could potentially fatally injure a student, a person on the first time. So I am so for any kind of education that we can get out there. I know that like Mrs. Gans just said that she and Mr. Julian, St. Julian had, you know, they captured, call it ten kids, but there were so many more kids doing it. And I think that that's sort of the reality that we need to look at. And whatever it takes to knock this crisis down, and I do use the word crisis, and I thought it gets a little dramatic, but it's such a big deal. This isn't just like smoking cigarettes behind whatever. This is like a potentially fatal on your first, don't, just don't do it, just whatever it takes.
Two things. Number one, I think we should invite the lawyer to the next session. Number two, and maybe this is a little premature, if this is not going to cost us any money, I would move that we join the lawsuit.
Yeah, I was going to say, point of order, if someone suggests that, we can say we agree. It doesn't have to be a motion. It could just be, we're interested, right?
Yeah. Yeah. So we can bring up on the next school committee, anything that's on, goes around us. Yeah.
Yeah.
But we have.
Not a lot of time, also like in streaming.
Well, no, no, we have, I mean, so let's do it on the one, you know, if everyone's in agreement, have the attorney, you know.
Yeah, now it's on the agenda.
It's on the agenda. Just ask whatever questions you want.
Yeah.
Can we, is it too, is that too fast to try and have some historical data? I don't know how, what it looks like, you know, I don't know how hard this is.
You know, do you ever think during the COVID years, one student in the bathroom at the time, we're going to monitor right off the top. We didn't have the issue for two years. So, okay, I just want to put a perspective, that's, and it's going back before.
And those are also problems that all districts are probably dealing with. So, you know, we didn't have a lot of discipline issues in.
We didn't.
You know what I mean? So, but I would just like, whatever we have, even if it's incomplete, we send our information, what we have, that'd be awesome.
But I will say, I don't think it's as fair to accurately reflect.
Definitely. I have to be a meeting where a girl would say that her daughter would run home and went to the bathroom because the vaping in the bathroom was so bad that she could not believe it.
Yeah.
Now, that's an anecdote, one person, I don't know how reliable she is. So, but I think that, you know, I agree with Melissa, one, but I'm sure there's a lot more than one, and I think it needs to be addressed.
I totally believe that because I can remember being at the high school and same thing, but of the cigarettes, I would like to run.
Bill had his hand up. Bill?
I just want to reassure Margaret that she's not the only one who's heard that. I've heard that from a number of different students that they're, they don't even like going into the restrooms in the schools because of what kids are doing in there. So let's, yeah, I just wanted to reassure you, Mark, I'm not the only one.
Thank you, Bill. Don't we have student-reported data around this? Isn't that part of one of the surveys?
Yeah.
This is about to look at them.
Yeah.
Because that.
Yeah.
The Seber?
Yes.
Yes.
No, but there's another one that's more comprehensive that the high school used to do. Yeah, yes. No, yeah. Yeah.
I think. God knows, you could do the comprehensive survey, and that data is so unresolved.
Youth behavioral survey.
Youth, at first, at first, yeah.
That.
Remembered in the industry, yeah.
So we might have information from there, too. It goes back a little bit further.
Yeah, all right. Okay, so the next update, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Snyder to talk about a very special day that we are having on October seventh, the Day of Belonging.
Yes, so pulling together a lot of the things that we've been talking about and trying to keep the energy from complication carrying forward, we have prepared an in-district conference. I'm looking at Henry. Henry, Mary Kate Stevens, our Teaching and Learning Specialist, myself, we've been meeting to try and go through the planning and logistics and been recruiting a number of colleagues and also trying to use the momentum from the opening PD and the choice PD to have a number of our colleagues facilitate throughout the day. So we've got a keynote speaker, a student panel, a partner expo. And then we're going to experience different discussion strategies the entire day centered around building a culture and community of belonging that we can bring back for our students. But one of the exciting pieces is that the Falmouth Road Race has kindly offered a grant in response to our outreach so that we are going to be able to purchase for everyone participating, including our community partners, a T-shirt that represents our day. So it includes the Falmouth, this micro community, has some additional language around the Day of Belonging, and then just becomes that continued reminder of the culture and the spirit of the day and the community that we're trying to build. And, you know, we're having our spirit days, and that's another piece of that. So we're really excited and very thankful to the Falmouth Road Race and the outreach and for the day that's coming up next Friday.
All right, so also requested by school committee members to provide some data regarding why students leave the district. So just, we pulled some numbers last school year, right? So we had sixty-five students that moved out of state and five students that moved out of the country. Obviously, they relocated, right? So I think that's explanatory. We had ten students that went to a virtual school. Again, I think that self-explanatory. We have thirty-three students that went to private. We have twelve students that homeschool. We have one student that dropped out of school. So I think some of, you know, like these are, you know, kind of important, right? The, you know, why did we have a student drop out? We had thirteen students that moved to the HICET so that they could work on their GED. You know, we usually have a little information, understanding why they're, you know, that they choose that. Seven students non-attendance. Seven students moved out of the district. We don't know. Their location is unknown, unfortunately. Twenty-five to a charter school and forty-nine students to the upper K. So I think out of that, trying to understand, you know, understand, like, the school choice, you know, students. We have eighty-seven students that are in another district, so they may have moved to another district locally. And we do have that. Students will, might be in Mashpee for a while, come here, but then they go to Farnwell. And a lot of times, it's the, it's the rental situation, right? They have to move out for the summer, and then it's where they can find, you know, a rental for the winter. And so that happens. But we do have sixty-eight students that school choiced out last year from Falmouth. So there are some, you know, situations here I think we could probably try to understand a little bit more. But that's not for the efforts that we've already done. I'm going to pass it over to Henry to talk a little bit about the efforts that, that we do try to understand.
So, I caught you off guard, sorry.
No, it's okay. So just like as the assistant principal and the counselors, as you pull the students in, as they're leaving, and their parents, and you try to talk with them about, and then what can we, I think I just said the whole thing.
He did. So one of the procedures is definitely getting the parents and students come in to find out. There's always, the students going out for maybe if it's a tennis problem, or where kids, case might be. I've sat in millennia meetings where we sit down with the guy, his counselor, parent, and the student. We're trying to figure out ways we can get around it. It might be, here's an alternative, what can we do to support you? Whatever we can do. If nothing, you know, they all say, well, we still want to leave, then, you know, we just, we just keep providing more information for assistance. HICET's always been one of our go-to kind of situations for work studies or any of that stuff. So it depends on the student itself and their needs. So having that coming in, I've had meetings where it's students, doesn't come in, but it's the parents. Just having the parents sit down and say, what can we do? How can we help your child go to the next level? So that's the one thing, the saddest ones are, you know, when they just, both parents and child refuse to come in. I think there was one that happened, was like, you know, you're just calling, you're hoping for that, and it's just done. So that's, that's my only sad one for last year, but that is a procedure that we do with any kids, any student that's leaving.
I have some questions. So in, we had the numbers that you shared, Lori, so there were thirteen HICET students who opted for high school equivalency. And there were seven non-attendants. Would these twenty students be considered in our data for dropout?
Well, if they go and take the HICET and pass, within a certain window of time, they're not considered as a dropout.
Okay, do you know what that time is?
I want to say it's before October first. It's that, it's that Sims October first date.
Okay, so it's the October first of the next year.
I believe so.
Okay.
And we have those names of the students that have done that, and we ask the counselors to, even after they drop out, to go and try to reach those parents and say, can you, where are you at that, that spot of going into HICET? So there's a continual process on that, even after they drop out.
Bill has his hand up. Bill?
Yeah, and I want to thank you for sharing these numbers. I guess my question is, what are we doing, what are we working towards to put into place to ask these families why they're going where they're going? We can see where they're going, but why do they feel like spending thousands of dollars on a private school is better than a free education in Falmouth? Why do they feel the charter school is better? Why do they feel that their child is better off at home being taught by their parents instead of our wonderful faculty and teachers? So I guess my question is, what are we doing moving forward to have a mechanism in place to track that data and understand where we're coming up short?
So we will continue to work on that, Bill. You know, I think that we all would like to know that. And we'll try to do, you know, we're not going to reach every student. I know that there have been attempts to try to reach families when they make the decision, but we're unable to actually talk with them. We don't have that opportunity. We're fortunate, you know, when our counselors do get an opportunity to talk to families, but we can certainly dig into that a little bit more.
I want to create those opportunities rather than to wait for them.
Yes, thank you. You said it better than I did.
Respectfully, I don't think that we're necessarily coming up short on some of the choices. You know, I applaud the today's education that families have a choice because not every kid is going to succeed at the amazing free education that public school offers. And that's why perhaps some families choose homeschool or private school or charter school or upper K. Whether, I don't, I don't want to focus on thinking that it's necessarily that we're coming up short. Not to say that some families don't think that public school is coming up short. I'm not, but I don't, I would hope that the focus wouldn't be on that portion, more to focus on, we have an amazing choice. And I love that we have this, all of these choices, whereas, you know, years, in the years past, we haven't.
Yeah, I want to echo what Melissa was just saying because I want to make sure that we're spending everyone's time in valuable places. And, you know, you could go and try to track everybody down and spend all that time asking those questions and have as many different answers as there are families because their students require one thing or their situation requires it. Or, I mean, I know families who just said, I went to a private school, my kids don't go to a private school, right? They had no other reason for that. Wasn't anything that we were doing. So as long as there is the outreach that we have in place to talk to students and families, and maybe every once in a while, a focus group could be done, where you pull in a subset of parents or students and ask some questions just so we touch base and check in and make sure that there isn't something that we're doing. Just so we touch base and check in and make sure that there isn't something that we're doing, you know? Or we could be doing better or there's something systemic that's going on. But otherwise, I just think if you add up all those students and we start spending all the time to track down those families and playing all that phone tag. I'm just not sure we're going to get enough information that's going to be beneficial to, that we have any kind of control over.
Mike.
I don't agree with that and I apologize. But it's the same thing with every, every student is important. Same with the vaping thing. We don't know why students are leaving. And if we lose a student for a reason that we can change, we should be focusing on that. Seven students no-showed last year. How do we, we don't know where they went. Do we call them? Like every day, do we contact the state where they are? How does that work?
We often don't have any contact information.
Now, if the student has contact information, at what point of them not going to school, do we contact them? If you have a phone number.
So, so by law, you know, after they're over sixteen, we have to contact them after ten consecutive days. No matter what, over sixteen or not, after ten consecutive days, we're calling it. We're calling before that. But then at that ten day, then it triggers, you know, a procedure where we're getting them in. We, we say, here's two days, please come into my office for a discussion. And we're, we're really digging into that, that aspect there. So that ten mark, a ten day consecutive day, that's, that's when the flags go. But notice they, they're being called and being talked to before that day. But that, when that comes up, and it's, and then it's, it's a go, let's, let's try to get these kids in.
Okay, so I follow up please. So ten days is the standard, consecutive day phase. And at that point in time, you contact the state, you call the parents. Like that is a standard that has to happen. After ten consecutive days with a student enrolled, not coming to school.
Well, no, not necessarily. That's the law applies to students over sixteen.
So under sixteen, what's the law for under sixteen students, which is the majority?
Yeah, we still reach out, because at the high school, you know, we would reach out to families all the time. We even have coordination team, we talk about it weekly. The student seems to be having an attendance issue. Or even students, they might come for a couple periods, but oh, they're feeling sick and they're dismissed and they're not coming for the rest of the day. There's a whole variety of attendance issues that we try to address. Many of them, we just have to address on a case-by-case basis because each student is unique.
Terry and Bill.
Um, I think too, we got to put into this mix, how many kids choose Falmouth? We have a really high school choice number. I mean, that's part of the mix. I think we might get more useful information for asking them, why did you come here? Than having to like have every, every two phone tag and tracking them down. I mean, I know we give the effort, a good effort. Maybe it's not, maybe it's a hundred percent successful, but we give a good effort to track the people down. So maybe we should look.
So we definitely will give the school choice information. But I, I believe it was a hundred and sixty-one students last year that came, that came in.
Okay, Bill and Margaret. Bill?
Yeah, with, with all due respect, I understand we have to, we can, we should look at the positives. And that school choice can be a good thing. And there are some great schools out there and families might make that choice. But along with what Mike said, e-every student matters. And we spend a lot of time as a committee, making sure that every single student in our district feels like they belong. We should be putting the same effort in if, if we have a family that pulls out. And a phone call to someone who decides to bring their kid into our district requires the exact same effort for a phone call to someone who decides to pull their kid out of the district. And so I just want to reiterate why it's so important that we get this data. Because if we're falling short somewhere, we need to know about it, whether it's one student or seventy-five students.
Thank you, Margaret.
Well, I think the numbers were really important to have. Sixty-five people moved out of state, five out of the country, that's seventy people. You know, I think that time is limited. And I do think that making sure that we have the best school system that we can have is more important in terms of spending our time. You know, one phone call, that's reasonable. But chasing after families who have gone seems to be, you know, taking valuable time. We wouldn't be focusing on doing a career good job.
I just, last meeting, I believe you talked about the demographic breakdown with, when you asked this question. Do we have that information?
Well, we, we can, yes, we absolutely can get it, right? And look at share as we're pulling, probably not as easily.
I'm not, I'm sure I know exactly what kind of breakdown you want. As far as what?
I, this, I'm just piggybacking on what you asked last meeting about the demographic of which students are leaving. Not the moving out of state, not the moving out of the country, but the dropouts, the charter schools, the private schools, upper K tech. And the reason, and I want to speak for you, but if you see a pattern of demographics of students going one place or the other, then we have, you know, several issues where those particular pockets of demographics are leaving for one reason or the other. So it's not a one band-aid fits all. We can kind of say, you know.
Are you talking about race and ethnicity? Breakdown? The breakdown, I think that's what the question was.
Well, race, ethnicity, and any other, you know.
Gender, right? Gender, I guess it's just one, yeah.
Language, just.
IEP, language, you know.
He said IEP, yeah.
Okay. We can probably do that, that makes sense. I'm not sure that I'll have that available for next week.
Any other questions or comments?
I do, okay, a few more things. And just, that's what is so, so exciting. I have to tell you, I am so proud of our district, but also proud of the student services. We, I, I have never actually heard of this thing before. But we actually got a, a report back on five categories that just in reviews. And, uh, to our audit, and it's, I'm gonna, I, I want to begin with good news. So I'm not going to go introduction without overview. Because I'm, I just, congratulations to, to Jen and her department.
Thank you. So we did, as Dr. Dorr just mentioned, that Russell Johnson, the Associate, Senior Associate Commissioner for the Department of Education, sent out to all the districts, all of the LEAs, their status where it is for equity and special education indicators and the initiatives for the status for what this school year would be. So as we've been talking tonight and, and all of our meetings, is that the Department of Education has the priority to increase educational access and equity for our most marginalized students, especially students with disability. So what they've done is they've looked at our data across, they, what's indicator four A, indicator four B, we could a little bit more, I mentioned that. Indicator nine, indicator ten, and significant disproportionality. And under those indicators, they, you have a status of being identified or not identified, flagged or not flagged, or at risk, not identified at, at risk. And so very happy to report that some public schools, we came out as not identified, not flagged, not at risk, not, in all of those categories. So the significant disproportionality in special education is really looking to make sure that, that there, that that measures whether students from certain racial and ethnic groups are disproportionally, disproportionately receiving special education services in specific disability categories. Whether there's disproportionality placed in certain settings and whether there are any disproportionality receiving certain kinds of disciplinary renewals. So we were, we were not identified or at risk in that category. Indicators four A and four B, that measures whether students with IEPs overall and from certain racial and ethnic groups are suspended or expelled in LEAs, local districts, you know, within the district, more than students with IEPs statewide. So we were not identified. And then indicators nine and ten, that went through data, data analysis. And the department measures whether students from certain racial and ethnic groups are disproportionate, disproportionately receiving special education services, both in general ed and in other disability categories. Because they were inappropriately determined eligible for special education services. So we'll be very happy to report that we're, we're bound to be very equitable. And we'll be sure that our identification of special education and how we place us into the right place.
Great.
Okay, and just a couple of updates. The NCAS data will be publicly released on Thursday this week. The individual student reports will be sent out on October thirteenth. And Sonya will be giving us an update on NCAS results at our October twenty-fifth. And then one last, I'd like to recognize one of our teachers that was published in the School Arts Publication. It's a national magazine journal for her honoring veterans of the Korean War. Work and exhibit that she has done with her students in the past. So it's a huge honor for her to be recognized and be a part of the national publication.
I see, but you want her name?
Jane Baker.
Jane Baker.
But you have it in your, I, I copied it since you're, yeah. Jane Baker, yeah. So we're very proud of her. She was so excited, so. Can I give a shout out to Jane Baker? Because my, my middle daughter, Tommy, who now is a, she's twenty-five, a math teacher at her hand over high school. She, she sings such praises of Jane Baker. And this is actually my daughter Tommy's portrait, and that's her there and there. When this came out, Jane texted me and she was like, this was four years ago. So she was, but Jane is really, Jane and Corinne and all the art teachers, but they, they're just phenomenal art teachers. And get award after award after awards with their students.
Didn't they also do one on World War II veterans? Didn't they have them come in into their classrooms and talk? Wasn't it World War II veterans?
Yeah.
Yeah. And they learned, they both, the, the elderly members and the high school members told what they had learned from each other. And a high school kid said, I'll never honk at an old person on the phone. For once, it's slow. And I forget, I wish I had a nice quote, what the adult had learned from the student, but yeah.
I will say my daughter and her, they, they did form quite a bond. They really got to know each other.
Any other questions or comments? Oh, that's quite an update. Thank you very much. Um, next on our agenda's routine, business approved school committee minutes from September thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. Their motion, second, and, and edits.
I have my name added on to the administrative, administrators.
Yeah, I had, I want you to.
Kelly pointed out that I didn't arrive at six thirty-nine, but I was remote.
Okay, remote, okay.
Thank you, Jen.
Any other edits? Okay, so the motion is to approve these, the mini school committee meeting minutes from September thirteenth. With the two edits of adding Mr. St. Julian to administrators and marking Mike as remote. We have, it's going to be a roll call vote, Bill.
Build order, yes.
Okay, yes.
Welch, yes, Gerber, yes, we have, yes. Most key, yes. Natalie Kowalski, also a yes. Okay, next is the minutes from July twelfth, also on our packet or treat. Is there a motion? I think a motion to approve the minutes with one edit. To add under, right, right words of one, two, three? Yes. Just before that or just after it, that we also evaluated our twenty twenty-one and twenty-two goals. Yes. I go on record that we evaluated, yes. Motion second, I just want to write that down. Roll call, Bill.
Build order, yes.
You know what I'm saying?
Welch, yes, Gerber, yes, we have, yes. Most key, yes. Natalie Kowalski, also a yes. So next is committee member reports. Any reports on things happening in the district or some committee meetings?
Okay, so I have two. One is that the VIPS and the Falmouth School District just signed a memorandum agreement on September fifteenth. Okay, and it's, from, from me looking at it, it's not what I had defined as a memorandum agreement. But simply a description of what they do. We didn't seem to have anything written down anywhere of what the different people and the different groups they do. So it was that. And the other thing was this, the communication committee met this morning. And we have some actions to present to you. One, I'm going to start with it because I've always been against it. I'm going to start with it first. We agreed that we'll put ourselves on Facebook. So we are going to ask Lori to have whoever you have does the school, the FPS thing. Maybe they can just do the, the school committee one. So that it isn't a place looking for any feedback, just giving out information. So we intend to use it twice before a meeting, like the week before and the day before. Just simply put out that you can look at our, you can look at us on YouTube, see what happens. And anyway, so all you young, youngins will be glad that we're going to do Facebook now. We also came up with our first big event of the thing, because it takes a lot of time, put into a discuss, informal discussions. So we're looking for October thirteenth. Don't write that down because we have to make sure that all the pieces come in to play for that day, to have a meeting. And the theme of the meeting is going to be, welcome back Clippers. How did your year start out? And we would like to have it given at the high school during Clipper time. So we have to see if we can get a hold of one of the Clipper times. And we're going to have it at the Morse, we're looking to have it at the Morse Bond School. The first one at four o'clock would be for staff. And then one at seven o'clock would be for parents, children. We're going to emphasize children, children. We're looking, and any staff who couldn't come at four, okay? But we're going to try to hold the four o'clock one for staff. We're going, we're going to look at ways that we can offer childcare at the meetings. Maybe high school students need community hours. Maybe we can work with the activities office there to see if we can get them. Because our big thrust is the kids. We don't hear enough from the kids. I mean, I'm going to say one time, as a Frencher, I spent hours on a presentation. And the shirt was great, the kids were going to stand it and it bombed. So, you know, if you're in the classroom and, and the kids don't want to talk to us, they don't know who we are. So we make an effort to get in there. I'm talking fast because it's late and we did a lot today. The, the three members of the committee are going to start the ball rolling for this. And then we're going to put a real concerted effort to have other people sign up for things. We thought originally when we sent out a survey last fall, remember? We have two or three months. People said quite often in the survey, school committee needs to come into the building. They need to see what's going on because there's so many good things that you don't know, you know? So we're going to encourage people to glance at the, the calendar, that's district calendar that's put under our dropdown page, or see if there's something that you would like to go and attend. Like where, where is people going? We just wanted.
We saw some, there were, like, you know, on the district camera, it has the trip to, we'll quote, Estuary, there's a trip to Ford Farm, just to, to make a concerted effort to, to show up.
Yeah, I mean, it's, we have the luxury, some of us have not had any jobs, so we can go in during the day. But if there's anything available, and also if you read the principal's newsletters, they put out what's going on. So maybe that could ease you in. And then the next time we have a listening session, we'll make an effort to have other people do it besides us. But just to get it rolling this year. Okay, did I forget anything? And we're going to try to meet real close after the listening sessions to give a theme, to put together the theme and hand that to Lori. Okay, so, and we're emphasizing that we're the conveyor of information. And we want to, we want to be the gatherers of information, not necessarily the fixers of things, but the gatherers.
I think the only additional thing was. I think the only additional thing was, um, the summaries, the super short video summaries of our meetings. That we said we were gonna, right, that we're gonna post the next day. Acknowledging that people are not, um, going to probably watch our three hour long meeting.
But we'll talk, don't worry about that. Whoever she, yeah, whoever she has, put that on.
Just noticed that you have student translators now.
Oh, well, yes, we, we, we went by the, um, the mission statement of our goal, and one of them was equity, so we won, we remembered that the last time we had listening sessions, we had two translators there. We had, um, I won't say their names, um, Trisha Osman, and, um, but, but we have a Spanish translator and a Portuguese translator, that, that, uh, histor-, um, seamlessly attend meetings all over the district. So, we are meeting, I don't have our mission statement handed, um, it's a homework, I took to get it, or.
The goal?
The goal, yeah.
Yeah, it, it's just the end of the goal, I identified that we're gonna, um, approach communication with an equity lens to ensure all those are heard.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, so I just have, I just have a comment on, on that, that, you know, using the school interpreters is, I would say, the way to go to ensure that the information's being
interpreted. So we're just continuing what we did.
But we wanted to highlight, there's only one thing in that goal that, in the overall thing that we didn't touch on, but we're going to, that's working with a communications um, expert that we have, but we'll get to that.
Thank you, Andrea. Um, I just wanted to, um, ask some things, sort of like operationally about that, because I think all that stuff sounds really great, and I'm so glad you guys are meeting and, and getting this moving forward. So as our groups are doing that, and we're, we're spurring things on, um, the, so is there anywhere that we need to have the discussion, like, as a group about, like, individual items moving forward with them? Or do we just say, we've got the three people who are assigned to them, and, and go for it?
Are you, are you speaking of the feedback received, or tell me more?
So, uh, like, this is the first one that's happened, right, so here's, oh, this is the things that we hope to do, do we discuss that as a group about like, moving forward on those things, or just?
We didn't last year, no. Last year, we entrusted that, those members to lead the work. And then provide quarterly updates on, you know, what you're hearing, if there's certain themes, and then obviously you're gonna be communicating with the superintendent if there's something that is a flag, um, so she can address it or look into it further. But Melissa, you can say.
I, I just, um, we sent in our requ- requests of these, um, you know, I don't know how them subcommittees, but task forces like the three of us are on, um, and I wouldn't want to, I, I trust the other people that are in the other groups. Um, I feel like if we have questions along the way, but I don't know that I would, I am, I'm gonna use the word micromanage, but I feel like I don't wanna micromanage another group. And I feel like that's kind of a, a aggressive term, and I don't mean to come across aggressive, but, um, we are trusted by each task force, subcommittee was trusted, uh, by the chair who divided it up, that they would handle each, um, they would handle their own content of their subcommittee.
So, and I, yeah, so I think, um, like, in my mind, the reason that we don't bring all of the the projects and the effort back to the full committee is because they're, for the most part, identified or called out in the key actions of the goal. So I, I guess if we're gonna deviate substantially from that, I would think the committee would probably need to weigh it, weigh in us. But I think as long as we're pretty closely aligned to those, whatever we call them, key actions and something others, something. As long as we're staying close to that, I think we should be. We, we should be okay.
Yes.
I just wanted to follow up my committee report, like, not my, uh, just what I said last, last, uh, meeting about the E S Y, and, um, I know I'm not supposed to say stuff with the numbers, but I still haven't got a legitimate answer to how many written legal notices were sent out to the students who do not get services. I've heard some, I've heard whatnot, and I keep, keep seeing the same thing, we didn't have staffing, it was a staffing issue. And the law says that staffing is not an issue.
I just have to pause here, because the, the committee member reports about subcommittee reports or things happening around the district.
That's fine.
So that could be your question information, I, I haven't checked many emails lately, but I think there was a response, but.
That's, yeah, but the Special Education Parents Advisory Council liaison, that doesn't count for this.
So is, if you are reporting about something that happened at CPAC, or, that's fine, but that is sort of a separate issue to.
Okay, let's make sure to request information, that's fine.
Tell your, tell us that. I just, I don't want, I, I feel like we have already beaten this horse to death, and it is not in our purview to manage student services, so I don't think it's appropriate to entertain more questions around the data coming out of student services, it's not our.
Um, Andrea. Um, I'll just, uh, do another plug for, um, the Blooded Community Forum on Thursday. Uh, if you guys can all make it at the Thoma Public Library on Main Street from seven to eight thirty, if you guys can attend. Anyone else with, um, committee members? Your question for information?
Yeah. So I have a really weird one, and I, you know, if this is, if this is something that you don't wanna even explore, but i- it's, it's something that's been on the back of my mind for a long time, and as we were talking about dropouts or, um, high set, it's hard for kids to get it done, usually in that year. But I'm, I'm wondering why Massachusetts has continued this law of sixteen. And I know other states have changed it. And I just would love to explore a little bit as a school committee around potentially making some motion, um, statewide to, to look at that, because this is archaic, I mean, this is, this was when really, you know, sixteen year olds had to go to work, um, which sixteen year olds do have to go to work, I totally acknowledge that, but, um, to just, I'm just very curious around, I know some states have seventeen, um, eighteen, so, um, that's my, my request, and I, Lori, don't feel pressure about that, because, um, I can do some research. I just, I, I just, this is something that the committee would like to explore, I would like to do my own research on it too, so I just.
So can I just come back with that a little bit? Uh, recently, in my profession, uh, there was a situation where I questioned, um, a consent court sort of thing. Um, and it came back to the state law, what they consider the law of consent, and when you say some states say seventeen, some states say, say fifteen, I think it, it's totally on the state level of what the state considers consentable age. Even though eighteen is the legal, you know, you're an adult, you're an adult at eighteen, but it's, I, I, I don't, I feel like that's, I love that you wanna ask that question, but that is such a broad spectrum to, to the state house, kind of, you know, um, I don't know.
I just haven't heard other school committees looking.
It's so archaic, like.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just wondering.
Isn't, isn't one of our state reps on the education committee, David Vera, I don't like, oh, I don't mind showing his name around, because he made me go to the state house for a year, but anyway, he used to be on the education committee, maybe, that's a state thing.
Thanks, um, any other request for information?
I have a question about something different, I apologize if I care for all of our students, um, but, um, well, I can keep on talking about this, there were several students.
Mike, what is your question for information?
Um, someone asked me what we're doing for Hispanic Heritage Month, if we can get a, a breakdown of that, I don't know what we're doing, but uh, someone asked me this past Sunday, I don't know if we're doing anything special for that month.
Well, each school does something, uh, individually, and, uh, I know in the beginning, um, Dr. sent us, sent out that email. So, we need to do more.
Any other question for information? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Will Dorfner, yes.
Well, yes.
Well, yes. Jerry, yes, yes. Most key, yes.
Oh, yes.